The afternoon, everybody, everybody please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Will clerk please call a room?
Mr. Nada?
Here.
Mayor Samaris?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Ms. Dela?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. This afternoon, we have, we've called a special meeting for the selection of a new superintendent for the Lowell School System. Also, if it's with the approval of the school committee at the end of the interview process, it could be the selection of the new superintendent of schools. I'd just like to outline to everybody that's here, the process that we're going to use. We're going to allow the applicants to give five minutes of a presentation of who they are. And then each member of the school committee will ask a question with a possible follow-up question, if necessary. And if, once that's completed, we'll go back to start the round again and go into a second round. Whether we get into a third round is, we'll play it by, in that, in that respect. So, the applicant has five minutes for presentation, a series of questions, and five minutes for a closing statement. Are there any questions of the members of the committee? All right, thank you. Mr. Kucha, would you bring in the first candidate?
Good afternoon, Mr. Scott. On behalf of Lowell School Committee, I want to thank you for being an applicant for the position of superintendent of the Lowell Schools, okay? What we intend to do, what I was explaining to the audience, is that each applicant will have five minutes for a presentation of who they are. You can, you know, we've read your resume, and we pretty much have a good idea of your background, but the thing is, this allows the candidate to, we'll say, give a, an outline of their background that they feel is important and would match the needs of the Lowell School System. So, then you'll be asked one question by each candidate, each school committee person, and with a possible backup question if they needed clarification or follow-up. If that process goes through, then you'll be asked another series of questions. And you'll have five minutes at the end to bring closure to, to your statements and give us a closing statement to state why you feel you should acquire this position. Are there any questions that you have at this, at this point? Okay, well, again, welcome. And the city clerk will call the first school committee person. Oh, I'm sorry. Don't mind me. I had, we had graduation at the university, so I'm running between different, I apologize, Mrs. Scott.
Again, good afternoon. My pleasure to be with you this afternoon. I'm very excited about being able to share with you my own background and answer your questions as we prepare for the superintendency. Allow me to share just a little bit of my own background through sharing what my passions are. I would share three key areas of passion. One is education, the other is psychology, and the other is the arts. And my history of my family has been one full of focus on education. My great-grandmother was a teacher at a one-room schoolhouse in Milledgeville, Georgia. She was born in 1870. And my great uncles and aunts were educators coming up in the migration to Detroit and Chicago and Boston. Education's always been an important part of my life. And so I have focused in my own life on learning how to develop individuals, students, teachers, leaders, in ways that'll help them to, to optimize who they are. And as a psychologist, I've also found ways to, to do the same, but have expanded on my abilities to understand human behavior and to become a specialist at understanding how to support people in their growth and in their development as a coach, as a leader. And I also have focused on organizational development, learning how to help organizations to become highly efficient, to become a culture of nurturing and a culture of excellence. And, and as a psychologist, I have both the clinical side and also the organizational side as a part of what I do. And, and as a psychologist, I've always pursued the question, what is it that helps a person to be resilient? And I grew up in Boston as a, as a six child and eight brothers and sisters, always wondering, why is it that some succeed and others fail, looking at my uncles and aunts and the generations before? And that was the question that took me to graduate school. I studied resilience, and my dissertation was on resilience. And, and I, I looked at ways to accelerate development for students. And that's what has led me to be so good at, at doing turnarounds with schools and motivating kids to high performance, is that focus on resilience. And my third area is in the area of the arts. My great-grandmother on the other side of my family was an itinerant singer. And in the, in the early 1900s, coming up from the Carolinas to Providence, singing from church to church hymns and gospel as a, as a means of sort of sharing and, and learning. And so my grandmother and my mother both trained as singers, and so I became a singer as well. And I learned to how to sing opera and jazz, a family full of jazz singers. I'm also a percussionist, so anything that makes a noise, I'm perfectly willing to, to play it, from African drums to snare and other things. And so my passion is music. As a matter of fact, when I was living here in Lowell, when I was superintendent of Drakett, living in Belvedere, I joined the Gentleman's Songsters. And I sing second tenor or whatever they need at the time. And it followed my tradition of being the glee club president in high school, being the head of the male octet in high school, and being in every musical play that I could possibly be in over the course of my middle school and high school years. So the arts are very important to me. And in my work, whether in Drakett and Framingham, I've emphasized the importance of arts in developing the whole child. All the after-school and, and additional extracurricular activities were important to me. And I focused a lot on sports as well as I focused on, on the arts. I was a varsity athlete in playing football and in other sports, recognizing that these are the things that helped us build character, that helped us to expand beyond our academics. We also are whole people. And I think that in Framingham and Drakett, I was very successful at helping them rebuild their arts programs, which were in both places decimated as a result of budget cuts and the very difficult times that we had in 2008, 2010, 2012. And so I'm very proud of those elements of my background, the arts being an important part of, of who I am and what I think is important in schools, the, my focus on education and developing people, and my focus as a psychologist, which helps me to understand why we do the things we do and what does it mean to create healthy environments that allow our students to grow and our teachers to be effective in schools. So I'm very excited about being able to bring my passions to Lowell and to be able to support the development of Lowell as, as an extraordinary educational institution that nurtures every child and that supports every teacher and our administrators to being successful in making this the best system that it can be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Nada?
Thank you, and again, welcome to Lowell, or welcome back to Lowell, I should say.
It's a homecoming, yes.
It is a homecoming for you. The Lowell School System doesn't always have the best reputation for longevity of our superintendents. And while you were superintendent in Drakett, you moved on to Framingham. While you were in Framingham, it was reported that you were up for looking at Cambridge in Louisiana and Fall River. We're, I think, all in agreement that we're looking for someone who wants to commit, especially as we undertake a massive project of expansion and renovation of our high school. So my question would be, how do, how do you see your commitment to the city, and in turn, what would you expect as a commitment from the school committee to help you be successful in achieving that?
Absolutely. That's a wonderful question to start with. My time in, in Drakett was a wonderful time. The people in Drakett were warm, and we were highly successful being in Drakett. We created a three-year strategic plan when I got there, which was rather challenging and, and bold. As a matter of fact, the state, I think, heralded it at that time as one of the exemplar strategic plans for superintendents that year. Within two years, we had accomplished about 99% of the things that we had set out to do in Drakett. And we were doing major things to evolve the system and to improve its systems and strengthen its faculty at a time that was friskily challenging. Our budgets were always at a surplus. We always came in in the black, as I typically do each year. And, and I believe that the system was in a good place. I think that because we were successful in Drakett, word of that, I think, spread, and they invited me to Framingham because they had relatively similar challenges. And I was very excited about the possibility of helping them to be able to grow and to develop perhaps in the same ways that I had helped, helped Drakett. And in my time in Framingham, we did set very challenging and aggressive goals as well. And I think we were very successful, as I'll talk about hopefully over the course of the afternoon, some of the systems that we redesigned, some of the ways in which we improved the system. And I would hope to be able to bring those same strengths to, to Lowell. Lowell has a special place in my heart. And I, I loved being in Framingham. It was a wonderful place. The people were wonderful. The opportunities to grow and to develop the system were wonderful. But again, Lowell has a special place because when I was in graduate school, I moved to Lowell. My children were in elementary school in Lowell. Actually, they were among the children who went to the Lincoln Elementary School. This is the school that Abraham Lincoln's grandson commissioned. You probably know the history. And when the Bailey School opened, my child, my oldest daughter was among the first class to move into the Bailey School. We lived in Pawtucketville. We backed up to the state forest. And during those elementary years, my oldest daughter was in the advanced classes in the Bailey School, and my wife was, built the family center there. And, and so we, we loved living near the forest and biking along the, the river. So Lowell has a special place for me. And so I would look forward to being here in Lowell and really seeing the projects to their conclusion. I, I think the high school project's going to take seven years worth of time to kind of do the planning, phase by phase, do those elements. And I would long to, to be able to, to, to see that through its entirety over this, this last 10 years or 12 years of my career. What I would need from the school committee to make that happen is just coming together with a, with a unified vision to move the system forward. What was wonderful about the time that I spent in Framingham is that I came, when I came into Framingham, we did board retreats. We created a long-range strategic plan. We unified ourselves. And in every board meeting, we talked about an element of the strategic plan in every board meeting that kept us focused on the data and on the accomplishments of the goals in that plan. That would be the kind of effort that I would put forward to bring us together. And I would ask the committee simply to, to work with me. I want to spend time with each of you individually to make sure I know what your priorities are so that I can weave those into our overall work as a system. And then collectively, guiding with your own sense of the vision and, and guiding me as to the things that you needed me to focus on to make sure that I was effective at moving the system forward. So I would be excited to come to Lowell with a, with, you know, I'm perfectly comfortable with a seven-year contract, if you, just kidding. But, but I think that I have been successful in, in Framingham. They up, re-upped my contract. And I would hope that in, in here in Lowell that we would do the same, that we'd be able to have a, a long relationship that was fruitful and effective.
Clerk, just call each member out.
Ms. Martin?
No, you fall in the order. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for those answers. Mr. Scott, teachers look for leadership in their superintendent, someone who can direct the system, someone to give them the support. Can you give some examples of how you would show an understanding of what teachers need to provide a quality education to our students? And with that said, after a year of you being superintendent of Lowell School System, and if I or any member of the school committee were to go up to a teacher and say, "How would you describe your superintendent?" What would that description be after that year?
That's a wonderful question. So when it comes to staffing, let me leave you with three basic thoughts. They would be appreciation, motivation, and clarification. So in terms of appreciation, and I, I got this sense in, in being around the district and talking to leaders and to teachers and to your students, that there's a strong sense of a need for appreciation, that, that staff are working hard, especially with some of the cuts. Some of them are carrying the load of more than one job. And, and they made it very clear that sometimes all they need is just a sense of appreciation, that someone knows what they're doing and someone is willing to, to support them in doing that. In many ways, I like to spend my days first in the schools, then coming into the office. And I like to be in the classroom so that I'm able to, to, to learn the teachers' names and to, to see what they're doing in the classroom so that I can think of how effectively to support them. I, I know that I've been present enough when I walk into a classroom and the kids start to whisper, "That's, that's superintendent." Now, every once in a while, they would whisper, "I think it's President Obama." I took that. It's okay. I wasn't mad. But I, then I know that they at least know that someone is coming in who, you know, is, is important and is monitoring, watching them, wanting to make sure that they are effective. And then the teachers feel accompanied. They feel like there's a presence there that they can, that they value. In terms of motivation, I want to be able to motivate teachers by giving them a sense that we have a, a clear sense of where we're going and that, that we're doing it together. And my motivation for teachers in many ways is, is managed by communicating with them frequently and helping them to feel like there's, there's a, there's a captain at the helm. And there's someone who is caring for them and supporting them, supporting their principles, and making sure their principles have what they need to give them, to, to make them be effective. Finally, clarification is about making sure that their roles are clarified. Because when you do budget cuts, a lot of times roles get a little bit blurred. And I notice that that, that is straining staff as they feel that, you know, need to carry multiple, multiple roles at once. So clarifying the jobs, doing job assessments to make sure that people are feeling that they are clear what job they're doing and are, and are clear what the compensation is for that job, that those are things that help people to feel energized and engaged. And also clarification of the vision of the district. People get motivated and feel a sense of purpose when the leader is constantly communicating, "This is where we're going, and this is how you play a role in making that happen." And so I'd want to appreciate them, and I'd want to motivate them, and I want to make sure that it's very clear where we're going as a district. So a year later, what I want them to say is that he was present and that he really values us, and that he's inspiring, always tries to make us feel excited about the work we're doing, and that he's very clear on where the district is going to become that model district that we are striving to be. That's what I would hope to hear a year from now.
Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. Good to see you again today. Thank you. I know where you stand on the finance, because you're very vocal about that. But the Lowell Public School System has alternative schools already to deal with those students that don't function well in our regular classroom. There are still discipline issues that invariably impact the safety of our children and staff, as well as taking away time on learning in, in a lot of our schools. What steps would you take to help solve or remedy the inconsistency of consequences? I'm a big, I'm supportive of consequences for discipline issues from school to school?
I've read your, several of the policies that relate to this. And I recognize that you have strong policies. They're clear. But in going around from school to school, it's also clear that the students feel the inconsistency. They can kind of see it when they look from school to school. As I talked to students, I, I heard them say that, you know, they, they want more emphasis on discipline. They want more emphasis on the values that all students need to own. And, and they want that to change the culture of, of the buildings that they're in. And so, you know, talking to Alexia, saying that we should, we should, you know, promote programs like Generation Citizen in a way that allow us to be able to, to come together as students, to have the values that we need to have as a community. So again, I would leave you with perhaps a, a three-focused answer here as well. Voice, choice, and innovation. So I want our students actually to have a voice so that they're able to tell us how they would run their schools, how they want to be a community together. I think they really need to lead the way in showing us how together they want to run their classrooms, run the school in a sense in terms of making their leadership demonstrate how students, how they should be together. And they should have choice to be able to find where their interests can play out, to make sure that they're engaged in after-school programming, that make sure that they're feeling excited about arts programs or sports. Because when they're busy, when they're engaged, there's less time to act out. So we want them to have choices that, that allow them to grow and to, and to develop, not only their values, but their personalities and their character. And then finally, not only voice and choice, but, but innovation. I think that what will make students excited and decrease some of the discipline challenges that we have is to make sure that our students have access to innovative learning opportunities, innovative career, you know, school-to-career experiences, so that their brains and minds are engaged and they're busy and they're active and they're having fun. So I think those are the things that would help to make sure that our students are, are managing effectively. And I expect that what students would choose, because this is what they told me as I walked around the district, they would choose programs like social justice reform and an opportunity for restorative justice programming, where when something goes wrong, they come together as a community, perhaps as a grade level or a classroom or a school, and they talk about what are the ways in which the discipline policy should bear itself out. And that student ownership, I think, would help us to create more consistency across the district. And supporting teachers with training and development will help that as well.
Yes, okay. I, I agree with you in terms of what you're saying in terms of the high school perhaps. But how, how are we going to be expecting our kindergartners to have, to make these kinds of choices, where they're, we're trying to train them and get them used to what the, what the acceptable behavior is in our school buildings and, and into our middle schools?
So, yes, that's an excellent follow-up. But I think we never want to underestimate our children's capacities to lead. And so at any age, we want to engage them in thinking about the meaning of their behavior for their community. And we want to start them early so that by the time they're at middle school and high school, it becomes natural for them. Actually, this is what the students were telling me themselves, you know, "If we did this more in elementary school, when the students got older, they would know what was right. They would know how to behave." The PBIS program, the Positive Behavior Intervention Program, is an excellent program. And it exists here in the district. And I want to emphasize that program and to make it more consistent across the district because I know that it can work well if it's used consistently. In Montgomery County, as you know, I was the head of the Accountability Office. And so I managed the evaluators who evaluated programs within the district. And PBIS was one of the ones that we did a groundbreaking study on. To make, long story short, what we found is that effectively applied with appropriate fidelity, that program works very well. And it raises student performance as well as manages the culture of the buildings. So I'm a strong proponent of PBIS. But it has to, teachers need support to make sure that it has to be implemented, that it gets implemented consistently within every building. When you do that right, when you do it in a supportive way, so teachers feel good about it, then the kids feel good about it, and they are successful in managing the culture of their buildings.
Thank you very much. And the key word being consistency.
Absolutely. And I certainly heard of the inconsistencies, and it definitely has risen to the top of my, what are the priorities as I come in? I've got to look at where the, those inconsistencies lie, understand them, and then figure out how to support the system to create that consistency.
Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Good afternoon, Dr. Scott. Good to see you again. So I wanted to go back to some of your past experiences and have you talk a little bit about the reason for your changes in roles, the last couple of roles you had, and what, you know, how that fit into your overarching plans for your career and your goals for yourself.
Yes. So my broad goal is to be a transformational leader. I, I see myself as someone who has built skills and the capacity to help systems to grow and to mature toward their goals. And that both relates to both individual and organizational. So as a clinical psychologist, I understand how individuals develop. And I do the coaching that's necessary to make that development happen for individuals. But my broader focus is on equity and excellence. And so when I come into a system, my interest is understanding how is this system approaching excellence? And what does it need to be able to move in that direction? I've seen some of the most high-performing schools in the country, both as a coach, consultant, and also as a teacher and as a student. So I understand what high-performing educational contexts should So I understand what high-performing educational context should look like. And so my job is to coach the principals to help make that happen. And talking with some of your principals, I realize you have some excellent principals who want to make that happen and they need more support to do that. I also understand how, not only to help them individually, but what to say and how to help them to create a concept and an implementation of a high-performing school. So those are where my strengths really lie and ultimately helping move from excellence to equity, equity, equity being about helping to make sure that the schools have what they need and each child has what they need to reach the challenging goal. And that's why I wrote my book, Making Equity Work, because I wanted to help to make sure principals could understand how to change the culture of their buildings in a way that would help all students and in fact, all teachers to perform at high levels. I was excited about the ability to help Drake it, to refine its systems and make that happen. I believe I left a good legacy there. Uh, we did extraordinary work in Framingham where we were able to help one by one, I'll get to talk about some of the systems that we redesigned, that were designed to help to move the system forward. I'm very proud of that work and the fact that, uh, as a system, it needed to move in these critical areas and we updated its systems from finance to HR to curriculum and I can talk about those over the course of our time together. Um, in, in, by the fourth year, um, there was only one school committee member still on the school committee that had been there when I first came in. The priorities of the, of the school committee were in fact, shifting and changing. I'll always be a champion for equity and for excellence, um, but sometimes, um, your goals are different than the goals of your committee. And so in talking with the committee, it became clear that, you know, it was time to, to move to the next challenge. And so I was excited that I had an invitation to Harvard to go and to be a visiting scholar and also, uh, to go to Boston University where I could continue to work on developing teachers and principals for the next generation, that core thing that I love to do and I'm looking forward to doing here in Lowell. So it was, it was a wonderful experience both in Drake it and in Framingham and I believe I bring a lot of good experience with me as I come into Lowell, hopefully for a long tenure here. Thank you.
Mr. Hoy.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Scott. Uh, it's nice to see you yesterday at Framingham State and appreciate the way you treated us. My question for you is the Lowell Public School System has been running without an HR director for quite a while now and we're searching for one. I want to know how important an HR director would be on a team that, uh, Dr. Scott is going to put together. How important is HR to you?
So there are a few things that are more important than the HR director for me. Uh, there's a short list of folks that, that I keep really close to the, to the best, so to speak. And it's clear that you have challenges in Lowell that I, they would be at the top of my list in terms of addressing. You have the need for greater staff diversity, you have the need for increased diversity among your parents, we need to make that a priority so that we bring in increased diversity. We need to be able to support teachers in new ways so that we retain them when we bring them in and develop them with good succession planning, so that there's leadership development. All of these are things that need to happen as, um, we continue to nurture the system, but they don't happen without a very strong HR director. In Framingham, we were able to, with, with our, our HR department, to go to, um, paperless hiring, um, which is easy to say, but it took us about a year or two to make that happen. Imagine that for, uh, several thousand employees, every payroll action that someone requests, there has to be a piece of paper that actually is used to make that request. It's just a volume of unnecessary trees being cut down. So we, we updated that system, went to a paperless hiring and it dramatically changed the way in which we were able to hire, recruit, hire, retain and meet the service, the needs of our teachers. So recruiting is a critical issue here, I believe, in Lowell, particularly because you want to increase the diversity of teachers. You want to sustain the teachers that you have and you have some very strong teachers and you want to sustain them and support them, but for the next generation coming in, you also want to increase the diversity. You currently have some of the same structural challenges that Framingham, even Drake it, I think, had that we resolved when I got there. Principals now aren't often able to do their hiring until April or May. It's a significant, significant disadvantage when your best candidates are being hired in February and March. So we shifted the timeframe by which we would hire people and gave our principals the capacity to, um, make commitments earlier so that they could retain, hire some of those, um, more excellent teachers and get a broader diversity. And also then we identified ways in which we would be able to retain those teachers by supporting them, um, as we inducted them into the district. So your HR director couldn't possibly be more important. Um, and so that's a hire that superintendent should very carefully monitor to make sure they have the expertise, um, necessary to manage, um, uh, the issues that will, that will face the district and that they're able to be a real service provider for teachers and make teachers feel cared for. Um, I don't think there's anything that's much more important than that particular role. And that's why I think that role needs to report directly to the superintendent because there isn't a week that goes by that something that could end up in a lawsuit, you know, three, six, 12 months down the road if it wasn't attended to early and quickly. And, and the reason that we minimize those problems in my work in the past is because of being very close to the HR director intervening on those problems quickly so that conflicts among staff or, um, major problems get resolved quickly and early. But that happens because you have a close relationship with your HR director and they understand, uh, the laws and the strategies for being able to effectively support staff.
Thank you.
Ms. Lay.
Thank you. Dr. Scott, um, actually I want to say that I'm honored to have the opportunity to sit in front of you and to represent the citizens of Lowell. And, um, you probably have followed the, the crisis that we have here in Lowell. We lost a superintendent and, um, and so here we are. We, we are looking for another superintendent to, uh, to lead our school system. Um, you, you said you're from Lowell, you're, Lowell's like your, your hometown, but, uh... So I like to think that you, you're going to be our next superintendent knowing the state of situation that we are now in, in Lowell. Um, what do you think that, um, how, what made you feel that you had the confidence that, that you'll be the, the next superintendent to lead the Lowell Public Schools and put it on your back and, and move it, uh, to a better state of situation? And to ensure that you would stay for long, long enough to, uh, to see the outcome of your, your work? Who or which single interest group would you like to see happy under your leadership?
Uh, I need all the interest groups to help me, um, in the process and, and I'll start there and then go back to the broader question of why I'm the best candidate, the one that you want to do this job. But, but starting where you ended, Mr. Lay, um, my strategy is, and my style is to reach out to all of the, um, the interest groups within the community. I find that that's my role and responsibility to really represent you so that the communities that you're representing feel my presence, they know that I'm someone who will respond to their particular needs so that, uh, and they can see in my own background an openness to diversity and to different communities. I, I speak Spanish, so I'm able to speak Spanish with, you know, not perfectly, but with community members who come in. At times, actually, there were parents who would come in, uh, for a meeting with parents who spoke Spanish and they'd bring the Portuguese parents with them. I could understand about half of the Portuguese, um, and the, you know, and so that was enough to sort of make that work. I'm learning Mandarin, I'm a little slow, but I haven't started, uh, learning, uh, Mong and so that I'd love to be able to speak with, you know, the Cambodian population and to learn some Khmer. So I, I, I have some challenges ahead of me, but I feel it's important to honor people by working on learning their language, learning their culture. I travel, uh, around the world. I was in, in China for two weeks in March with a new school that's being developed, learning, um, the strategies that they're using and coaching and guiding them in terms of how to build their school more effectively with, with my own knowledge and strategy. So all stakeholder groups are important and I, my outreach is to go into the homes and to the communities or the churches or whatever organization I can get people to come to sit and talk with me to do that on a regular basis, uh, starting early to make sure people know that I'm available and accessible to them. But you, you began your comment by talking about the loss of the superintendent and you raised in my mind a critical concern that I wanted to, to address. When, when, when you have changed, there's an experience of loss and there's a certain amount of loss that I know the community is experiencing and there's, so there's some healing that's necessary, not just on this issue, but even on the high school renovation, uh, issues that, that tore the community to some degree. And so on my list of things that as I think in the back of my mind, the psychologist in me is thinking, there's some healing that people need around that issue, around the loss, the tran- transformation. And, and attending to those things is a part of what I do, um, as a, as a leader, as a psychologist, as an organizational developer, to make sure that people are, uh, clearly attended to. I think that, um, all stakeholders are important and, um, and to address the broader question of, um, why I'm the ideal candidate, I'm a highly experienced leader who has, um, experienced major challenges that you have here are ones that I'm very familiar with and ones that I'm very effective at being able to respond to. And so I can easily bring those skills here. I am an organizational developer, so when I see a system that is yearning to figure out how do we motivate our teachers? How do we accelerate the performance of our, of our students? I know that your, your data, and particularly in the high school around, um, Asians and students with disabilities, those are two of the main groups in which you currently have performance gaps. Well, closing performance gaps is a major area of my, my, uh, successful experience. Uh, in Framingham, as, as an example, one of the areas we had the greatest success was closing the achievement gap with students with disability. We had a remarkable, um, positive experience with the interventions that we placed, uh, put in place for closing that achievement gap were very effective. So I know how to close achievement gaps. I know how to address those kinds of difficult problems and so in that respect, as a systems manager, as a systems redesigner, I, that's, uh, the second reason why I believe I'm ideal. And the third reason, I've, I've alluded to the fact as a psychologist that I understand people, but I'll close with this notion that, that I'm, I'm good with people. I understand their challenges and their motivations, how to connect with them, how to, um, make them feel a part of the team. And so I would long to bring all of those skills, uh, to Lowell and I'm an ideal candidate in some respects because it's very difficult to get the combination of skills that I have. As a former math teacher, I'm excellent with numbers and budgets. As a psychologist, I'm excellent with people. Um, as a performer, I love to, you know, be out and about, talking to people, engaging with people. Um, you know, that's the part of, you know, you know, that's the part of being a, a performer that of course is, is exciting. But it's, it's partially just about bringing that energy to people and having them just sort of fall in love with the ideas and the vision and the future that you're creating for the organization. Uh, I think that's what I do well. That's what I, I'm excited about, being able to bring that to Lowell. Because I, I see how three, five, seven years from now, even 10 years from now, if we could sustain the, our, our energy and focus for that long, that Lowell would be a place that just, you couldn't touch it. It would, it would be unparalleled. And, uh, when you come together and you bring a community together with this diverse and you pull, empower the people who need to kind of be drawn into being engaged in the system, there's nothing that you can't do. And that's what I'm excited about, being able to do as I come into Lowell. You're welcome.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Scott. I know you had an opportunity earlier this week to, um, kind of tour some of our, our facilities, meet a number of our staff and students. I know it's a kind of one-day immersion, but, uh, could you share with us kind of your, um, your impressions of our district, of, of the people that make up our district and our community? And as you're kind of, we're preparing for today and ultimately preparing to, to begin in this new position, uh, what really was helpful and informing your kind of planning for those, the, coming into this interview for today? And again, your planning as you envision, uh, beginning this, this new position?
Excellent, excellent. You know, um, that's a wonderful question because, um, it was amazing being in the district. Well, I always love, that's why I try to start my days, um, going into the schools first, then going into the office, because I always love being in the buildings with students, talking with the principals about what their dreams are. They were very, um, frank and open, the principals, about what their challenges were as well, what their, what they wanted. And I felt a strong sense that they wanted coaching, that they wanted encouragement, that they needed clarity, that they wanted more communication, but they didn't want to be overloaded and overwhelmed. And so we talked about the strategies with, that central office would use to communicate with them succinctly and effectively in ways that didn't put in meetings, things that could be put in memos. But doing it in a way that when we come together, it's about building your capacity, it's about encouraging each other, iron sharpening iron, to get the job done. My favorite part was talking to the students. And so I, I've mentioned, uh, Alexia's focus and interest on, you know, uh, Generation Citizens and programs that could, that she thought could help her and her peers kind of get their arms around the, the discipline issues and the value issues. I think about Anthony, a seventh grader, and, and how he was interested in thinking about how we could, um, build, um, a better discipline process where students could just, uh, kind of figure out how to behave themselves. I, I think about Alita and, and her interest in creating, uh, values, kinds of focused programs that help, uh, students to know what the appropriate values are and to be able to, to move toward them. I think about Damon, I, I call him Doctor Damon because he wants to be a doctor. And I think about how it's important for our high school to build its capacity to nurture students who have high aspirations like that, so that they don't have to go to another school within our city, that they can come to our high school and recognize we have the programming necessary to help them to be successful. That's why I think that one of my primary jobs is chief marketer of the district. I'm going to sell the district, particularly to the Damons and the Anthony's, to make sure that they stay with us for the whole K to 12 experience and have some of the wonderful experiences that my own children had when they were here in school in Lowell. So I want to make sure that they feel that sense of connection. Ultimately, um, not only did I learn about the students and their passions and the principals and their passions, but I also learned a lot about the system and some of the challenges that you've been facing and trying to figure out, reading your minutes and reading your reports and strategic planning, I got a very clear sense of what are the, what's the scope of issues that you're challenged by? And, and perhaps even why they've created some of the, the crises that you've experienced perhaps in recent months. So there, there, because of my own experience in the district, small and large that I've been and I'm able to understand those challenges and what you need to resolve some of those challenges. Mostly, um, the systemic problems that you have, um, are important ones to focus on. Let me highlight just a couple and if I can extend my answer to this one just a little bit. The, one of the top things on my list is going to be the high school renovation and thinking about, um, have we planned out all the things we need to do to support the high school, to make sure that they're able to, uh, communicate to the public how that plan will roll out? You see parents who are beginning to react now to the prospect that their child going to the high school next year or the year after that, or the year after that even, will be affected by the, the high school renovation. So they don't understand that there's going to be a whole year of planning, getting ready. Then there's a year they're going to focus just on the field house. Then I think the next thing they're going to focus on is the freshman academy. They haven't even got to the main building yet and we're already three or so years out. So we need parents to understand, yeah, there'll be some phases where things will be more challenging, but that's not right now. And we can help you to understand what's going to happen three, four, five years from now so that you're able to, um, plan for that and anticipate that it's a manageable experience. It makes me think of what it was like for me in ninth grade where my high school built a new auditorium, a new administration building and a new library right out in front of the classrooms that we were in every day. And people think that it's too hard to study when that's happening. I found it extraordinarily fascinating to watch those buildings be raised up right before me. I certainly learned a lot about architecture and design and now going back to my high school, I, I'm, I'm, I'm an alum of several years now, it's been a while since I was there, but now they're actually renovating those buildings because, you know, the, the next generation of buildings is being built. And so it's exciting to watch the difference between what they built for us as we rose to be 10th graders for those last few years and what they're building now, um, in terms of the kinds of spaces that are necessary to move systems forward. So that's going to be at the top of my list. Maybe I'll just mention one more thing since I, I should move on. Um, finances. And finances are affecting everyone. And you will always have financial challenges, but they don't have to be depressing of your staff. And, but that takes managing and helping them understand the long-range vision of what are the things that we're doing with our resources? Are we cutting the right things? Are we listening carefully to make sure that we're not cutting in ways that are sort of cutting us, cutting off our nose despite our face? I'm concerned that some of the things that we have considered cutting are good in the short term, but they, the consequences long-term are perhaps more considerable than we've considered. So I would want to raise those issues and talk about the prospect of what does it mean to invest in certain things for our young people, knowing that the cost five, 10 years later is greater if we, if we, if we cut that particular item. Uh, and those would be the things that I would bring to you as a committee and say, "Here's my considered opinion, give me your advice so that I can go forward and make the changes that seem most appropriate." But I would be managing the, the emotions of the staff while making those decisions and, and making them deliberately and very carefully. But that's what, um, my job is, is to make sure that we're managing those systemic elements so that, um, whether it's about space, staffing, or, um, family engagement, that we're doing that in a way that's, uh, effective, thoughtful- that's effective, thoughtful, and with a long arc.
Mr. Nutter?
All right, you survived the first round. That's good.
Thank you. It's exciting.
I've watched the Lowell school system for several years before I was fortunate to join it as a member of the school committee. And it always appeared to me that the system works best when the superintendent is working collaboratively, not only with the biggest union, which is the UTL, but with the LSAA union, the clerks' union, the city administration and their finance team, and then working collaboratively and fairly. One of the complaints we've heard over the years is with different superintendents is they don't communicate equally with all. So based on your experiences, can you show us how you have not only worked with all of the unions and the city leadership, but how would you communicate fairly and equally so that all members feel that they're included and up to date?
Excellent question. Thank you, Mr. Nutter. So let me describe my characteristics as a leader in answering that question. And I would talk about being a visionary leader, being fair, and being determined. So as a visionary leader, my job is to be able to paint the vision of the district. Notice I didn't say create the vision because that is something actually that we do together. And I take from you as the board clarity on what the things you think are important and you're representing the people, and I go to the people and double-check that and bring all that together so that we paint a vision for the future. But my job then is to sell that and to make sure that people are excited about that, that they see how we're operationalizing that and that that plan is detailed and specific so they can see how we're going to make that happen. That's what's successfully helped me to nail my plans in the past and to be able to successfully accomplish them. So whether or not I'm doing, rolling out a STEAM program system-wide, which we did in Framingham, or managing any new rollout. We rolled out the STEAM program by creating a new elementary school that was a STEAM elementary school. It had maker spaces and it had real energy and opportunity for students to learn about design early on. It also was a Mandarin school so that they were learning Mandarin at the same time that they were in the STEAM environment. And then we were strengthening the middle school programming around STEAM so that those students, as they would rise, would be engaged in the same kind of tangible, you know, expeditionary learning and project-based learning. And then working on the same, in the high school, to create pathways for learning into business and other kinds of career opportunities for our students. My job was to communicate that effectively to the entire system so they saw what are we doing at the elementary level? How is it going to impact the middle? And what's going to be the vertical articulation that'll impact the high school? My job is to communicate that in a way that makes sure that we got everyone engaged. So of course, part of that is making sure that the union is on board. And I've had, and Drake, I have very successful relationships with all seven of the unions that we had. I love to think back on the fact that I got through the years there until the last week with no grievances. And the reason I was able to do that is that I have very good relationships with my union leaders. And before they could even drive from the school to my office, they had texted me and said, there's an issue. And sometimes we had resolved it before we'd even had an opportunity to meet. And there was this one that I couldn't quite resolve before I left and I regretted it. It ruined my 100% record. But that's because I honor the unions and I value them and I work collaboratively with them to solve the problems because I think that it's important for unions to represent their people and to bring those concerns in ways that helps us to make it a healthy place for them to be. So unions are critical. I think that my job is to build relationships. And building relationships with the city staff and managers is vital. And I believe it's vital for the future of Lowell and one of the principal things that I'll have to focus on. But I was very effective in doing that in Framingham. There are several ways in which I could demonstrate how I was effective. One of them is capital asset management. Perhaps I'll talk about finances. We created a long-term financial management plan that didn't exist before, a seven-year prediction of what would be our expenses and our income for seven years? And how would we project that out so that we could see every structural element that was increasing our budget over time? And we needed that both to resolve the contract negotiations that we had. They hadn't resolved it when I got in. And I had to resolve one quickly when I entered Framingham. And then we did a new one later using interest-based bargaining, which was well-received. But the data was necessary to help us to be able to be very transparent. This is the money that we have. This is what we'll have two, three, four, five years from now. This is what we can, this is what we can put on the table. It was a little bit unexpected and remarkable because people weren't used to that level of transparency in negotiations. But it was highly effective in why we were able to close our negotiations so quickly and effectively with such a sense of satisfaction because everyone got what they needed through an interest-based bargaining process. With the town, by having our own financial management plan, the town was able to create its own and we were able to bring those together. And together to be able to identify, this is what the tax resources will provide for us. This is what we need. How do we deal with the variances? By creating a monthly meeting of the city councilors, my staff, the committee chairs within the town, we were able to have constant conversation about what's our data? What are the needs and challenges? And what do we need to do about it? That particularly helped us with the issue of capital asset management. I could come to that perhaps with a different question. But it changed the way in which we manage budgetary processes, communications across town and city. And it allowed us to do some of the difficult things that I've alluded to already, like paperless hiring, which is a major issue between the town and the school district and other related transformations, even in the financial management system, some of which are needed here in terms of being able to encumber expenses and salaries in a way that allows you to predict accurately at any moment what you have in the budget to spend. The problem with the current system is that at any point at which you ask me, how much money do we have? I will give you a good answer, but it will be a best guess. And it'll take me, I don't know, a year, maybe two years to put in place the elements of the budgetary management process that I know you need, but we will do it and it'll be successful. It'll be one of my best gifts in my 10 years here. It'll be one of the best gifts that I provide for the system because it allows you to accurately be able to determine what are the resources that you have and when are you behind or ahead in terms of where you're going. So those relationships end up being critical because the collaborations then give you the capacity to be able to create the data sets, to create the conversations necessary to manage the more tough issues. And many of the issues become easier because you have the relationships and you have the data that guide you in the process. Forgive me, that was a little longer than expected, but it was a complex question. Thank you.
Ms. Maris?
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Thank you for the information you're providing us. I have a couple of questions. There's so much time we'd like to have with you, but I'm going to try to put two questions together and hopefully it'll make some sense.
It's always dangerous.
But former Senator Paul Songas said that the success of this city has been because of the public-private partnerships that we have. But to be truthful, most time they've not seen our school leadership embrace that concept. You know, they've done their work within the school system, but not embracing the public-private partnerships. But I believe that the Lowell school system, to be successful, will need to develop a three- to five-year plan with clear outline, a clear outline of goals and objectives on how this diverse student body will be supported, how teachers will be supported and included in the decision-making process. So if you believe that we need to have a plan, a five-year plan or a three-to-five-year plan, can you give us an idea how you'll develop this plan and what steps will you include? Will you take to include our teachers, our parents, but the, also the private partnerships that we have? I'd like to throw that in.
Yes, no, I was...
Sorry, a long question, but...
I'll try to be brief in spite of the complexity of the question. Wish me luck. Let me start off by saying that I think that the things that I need to focus on as I come into the district, in the 30, 60, 90 days of school that we have, I need to focus on presence, I need to focus on finance, and then I need to focus on variance. So by presence, I mean that I need to be out and about. I may ride the bus with the students to make sure I know what that feels like for them or meet them at the school door. I may be in classrooms with them, of different kinds of classrooms so that I can get a sense as to, you know, what are students experiencing? What's the rigor like? How are the teachers feeling? What do they need? And so that's how I will build my first point of connection to understand what is going on in the district and what resources do we need? What do I need to bring in? Because before, and I'm very, really good at going out and bringing resources in, but before I do that, I need to really make sure I'm well-grounded. So presence, finance, understanding the fiscal issues, making sure I'm fully versed in every line item and every challenge you've had historically and what we're going to be doing in the future. And then beginning to manage issues of variance. By variance, I mean that for every challenge that you're experiencing, it may be affecting different population groups differently. That variance leads to equity issues and it obviously leads to performance issues. And that's where you get to achievement gaps and performance gaps, where some students are doing well and others not. Some teachers struggling more than others because they may have more resources than others. So I need to analyze that to figure out, how do I make sure that we level, you know, level the rising tide so that everyone gets what they need? Without making people feel like they're losing anything at the same time because that's not necessary or desirable. So I want to make sure that I'm present, that I'm focused on the finances, and that I manage issues of variance as I come in. That'll get me, that'll get me established. Because once I understand the system, I can go find the partners. I'm very good at finding partners and bringing them in. I have a breadth of a network around the country with the nation's largest publishers. I've been on their national advisory boards. Even now, McGraw-Hill just hired one of my good friends to be a senior vice president, so hired by the head of McGraw-Hill to manage their innovation department ironically. I used to be on the advisory board and we spoke regularly with their innovation department about where are you going? What advice do you need from practitioners? So he was telling me that he has to go all the way to New York to find partners that are wanting to work with him around new technologies and new innovations. It's like, that's crazy. We could do that right here with you. And those would be the kind of partners that I would bring to the table, these seasoned ed tech designers who are looking for ways to move us to the next generation. The ed tech community and the entrepreneurs in Boston are actually among some of my best friends. I'm on their advisory boards. I coach some of their innovators. That's what I do in my spare time. And I would bring them to the, to the roundtables of superintendents that I was the chair of, and I would have them present and they would come to our schools and they would try their elements out. And we would benefit from that by piloting those new issues. So partnerships for me are a major opportunity to expand our own capacity beyond what our budget allows us to be able to do. And so I've done that with Bose and Staples and Google and partners that I have built relationships with over time. And I'd be bringing those partners with me. Foundations as well. I met the folks who manage grants within the district. In Framingham, we created a grants department that allowed us to be able to systematize the way in which we think about grants, monitor grants, and go find new grants. And we began to go and find six- and seven-digit grants because we had now created a structure that enabled us to do that. And I was doing all these things on extremely tight budget, usually moving something around because there wasn't necessarily money in the budget for adding. So we had to use the resources that we had to make these changes. And I was very effective in being able to do that. So I think that teachers and parents are the ones who actually give us clarity on what we need. And they then can be on the advisory boards to help guide us to make sure that when we go and find those partners, that they are true to our vision. Partners can often pull you to what they want you to do and distract us from the core business of instruction that is important to us. So we need those advisory groups to help us to stay accountable. So I would do all of those things in order to make sure that we moved forward. And I'll just say this in closing and answer that question. Senator Songas, I worked for Senator Songas when I was in college. And so he was a mentor and a model for me for, not necessarily on my resume because it's not enough room to put everything on there that I experienced. I worked for Senator Brooks, Senator Songas, I worked for Lieutenant Governor O'Neill, I worked for Senator Hicks. I was studying government. And so I learned from him qualities and characteristics of a person of great depth that I carry with me even to this day.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. As we fully, as we are fully in the 21st century, there are more and more career paths that are being started that would require us to add them to our curriculum, such as alternative energy, hydroponic gardening, desalinization, carbon footprint reduction, et cetera. What kind of curriculum changes do you foresee as opposed to what we are all accustomed to today in our current curriculum? What would you see as going forward?
So I speak on educational innovation around the world. As I mentioned, I was in China two weeks ago. We were talking about, this is, I was at a school that's sponsored by Huawei, which for all the negative news they may be getting is still one of the most innovative companies in the world. And they are sponsoring the billing of this new school. So you can imagine the degree of creativity in their innovation as they design a new school. And I find learning from watching them and partnering with them, being able to bring Lowell as a partner to them. They have a rather unlimited checkbook. They're building, their school that they're building, sorry. Anecdotally, they're spending $500 million to build the school. It's a K to 12 school. Maybe that's why it's costing so much. It's a gorgeous school. And they're connecting it to their headquarters, which is a $10 billion headquarters. My point in mentioning that is that those partnerships and the experiences expand my sense of what's possible. And they help me to see how we can in fact learn from them. The year before that, I was in Beijing speaking about educational innovation and designing seminars and workshops for leaders to understand how to do innovation in schools. So that's a specialty area for me. I love to go into the classrooms where, for example, the fourth grade class where the teacher is walking around the room with his or her iPad, in this case it was a him, and the students, before the bell even rings, school hasn't started, but they're all in there. And they have a choice on their iPad. They can work on math or they can work on science. And they're on their iPad just working. When the bell rings, the teacher knows exactly where every student is relative to where their math performance is and how they're doing in science and what they need to go forward. And so it's an example just of how technology can be used to know where students are and to know what is necessary to instruct them further. I've already mentioned my connection to the ed tech community. It's a strong and well-honed pathway for me. I want Lowell to be a 21st century model for how education should be. And so I've spent time in High Tech High in California. I've spent time in other high-performing schools because I think we need to have project-based learning that moves outside of the realm of what we do now within four walls where students are learning in a classroom with a teacher in order to engage students in learning that is about real world, is about solving problems that are real-world challenges and issues that our children will have to face when they leave school. And that's what I think education should look like in the future. I'll close with this one anecdote, just to kind of give you an idea of the most expansive possibilities that can really change the way teachers engage in teaching and students engage in learning. In Beijing, one of the administrators here was talking about new ways to free teachers up to be able to work with students based upon their interests, using social networking to know what students are interested in, assigning teachers to student groups on the basis of their skills and abilities and their value added for those students, which frees teachers up to not teach necessarily only in the current ways in which we teach, but to actually outside of the classroom to be having an equal or greater impact on students in a way in which they might choose to work with. And this, work with the union to talk about what do teachers want? And are they willing to, which directions would they like to go in? And then helping to sort of move us in new directions that could be exciting, to make us that model of what education in the future could look like.
Thank you.
Ms. Ardi?
So Dr. Scott, I think you've got a pretty good sense of what some of the issues are that we're facing here in Lowell. And I'd like you to pick two, two key ones that you think are important. One that you feel that you can hit the ground running and explain to us your background that is going to enable you to really move us forward, and one that is going to be a challenge for you.
That one's a harder one. But the ones that will hit the ground running ones? Because this is, this is the world in which I live in. These are familiar challenges, so I have to struggle to figure out which is the one that will stretch me the most. But the space issue that you have is one that as soon as I got to Framingham, we had similar overcrowding issues. And before I got there, they had produced a report that was potentially considering separating the K2 from three to five. When that report dropped, you might have heard a bomb drop as if you were, you know, here, but you heard the bomb there because that's how intense the reaction was. Um, I knew that I should never simply, you know, when there's a major problem, say here's the report and this is what we should do. That doesn't work. You have to engage people in the conversation, let them offer you information. So in Framingham, I, um, had my team assess the challenges and all the critical issues that, that we faced and the data behind them so that we could look at what are the possible, um, resolutions. Then brought that to, I like to do my homework, then brought that to forums with the parents in their schools that would be affected by any changes and got their input. Was actually able to take a few things off the table that they were very happy to see me pull off the table, like the possibility of moving fifth graders to the middle school in order to resolve the elementary overcrowding. They were really glad to see that one disappear because you don't want to see your fifth grade cherubs, um, go to the middle school monsters. Um, at least that was their concern at the time. And so we were able to figure out how to manage the overcrowding in a way that was effective. Um, and we built a new elementary school as a part of that long range, uh, solution. And, um, we also eliminated some of the problems that, I don't know why they were allowed, but classrooms underneath stairwells, classrooms in showers and gymnasiums and just things that are, are not effective, um, practices that we needed to, uh, redirect that we, that we quickly, um, adjusted. I'm still trying to think of which is the one that will stretch me the most. I think that, um, while the financial management, um, is, um, is familiar to me and I know the systems that I have in mind to put in place, um, there are, um, there are ways in which the relationship building is going to be challenging, but actually I want to switch my answer. I want to talk about the fact that 60% of, of the students here in Lowell are accomplishing the mass core. Now, the mass core is, uh, those critical courses that the state thinks that all students should do, four years of English, four years of math, um, social studies, history, et cetera. 60% of your students, that means that 40% of your students are leaving, they may have some, some, you know, higher level course, one honors course or something that's challenging because 80% of your students experience at least one really challenging course in the court, in their, in their period, in their process going through our high school, but 60% is too high. Now I need to take some time to understand why, not the first time I will have done an analysis of a critical challenge, but I need to understand what are the, um, pipeline issues that are affecting them such that the rigor level, the exposure level in middle school and, and elementary school is not sufficient for them to be ready in high school to be able to, to hit the targets that we have for them. I want to get that number up to 70, 80, 90% of our students who are experiencing the mass core. But that's going to take a retrofitting and reengineering of the entire system so that all of our students in all of our schools are able to get the challenging curriculum. And it may take acceleration strategies, but I've done lots of those before. It may take, um, you know, schedule, looking at the school schedule issues, but, so these are things that are longer term issues, not things you try to do right away. You take the time to assess and you let, let the, let the parents and the public and the teachers in particular lead you toward those solutions so that we can all go together.
Mr. Hoi?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to try to give you a two-part question myself. We have a, uh, it appears that we have a mental health issue growing in our city and in our schools. Every day we have children taken out and brought to our hospital to be evaluated for mental health. So I'd like to just hear some of your ideas, how we are going to help with health, health and wellness for our teachers, our staff and our students.
Excellent. I love that question. Because the psychologist in me loves that question because I'm always focused on, so the care and nurturing of the human spirit and, and, and wanting our learning environments to be not so stressful or difficult that our students can't just love learning and enjoy themselves and do extracurricular activities and be full, whole-bodied people. In Framingham, because budgets are tight, you, you have a problem, but you don't automatically have this whole pool of money over here that you can use to solve the problem, right? So, um, I went to the foundations in the, in the, in the Framingham area and they helped fund a clinical care coordinator. Because every, every year in the high school, you're going to have the 50 or 100 cases that are the, the most challenging cases and they stress out your counselors and your social workers because they're trying to do their day-to-day stuff, but they were trying to hospitalize a child or manage a child in crisis at the, at the same time. So the clinical care coordinator is able to meet the needs of those, um, more extreme cases and pull them off the caseload of the regular counselors and social workers, um, in such a way as to allow them to focus more and they work more effectively. And, um, and we began that through a grant and then began to slowly try to move it into the budget so that we could have not only one at the high school, we wanted to have one that was K to eight as well. That was our goal. Structurally, what I did was also to take all the elements that related to social and emotional learning and put them under one heading. And I had an excellent, um, nurse who could be the head of this department. She's actually the quote-unquote head nurse in the state of Massachusetts. She was an excellent choice to bring all of my guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, et cetera, et cetera, under one department. So they could talk about how should they keep records in a similar way? How should they meet the social emotional needs of the district in a, in a consistent and concerted way? And we brought this to the, to our staff under the, under the heading of a, a health and wellness initiative in which we had various topics that we were working on as a, as a district, talking about them together, about how we would wrap our minds around some of these difficult issues of stress and, and drugs and other major challenges that our young people were confronting. That reorganization had a profound effect on giving me the ability to support them as a, as a group and to guide them and let them guide us as a district to deal with the difficult social emotional issues that we currently face. Often it's about grants and often it's about, uh, creative conceptualization of how to get people together to get the job done.
Ms. Lay?
Thank you. I'm going to keep it rolling with the two-part questions. My first question would be, would you allow a highly qualified staff with a good track record of serving students to leave the district over a personal friction? And the second part would be, who would you turn to? Who would you turn to or how would you solve an issues when the city of Lowell and the school department are not on the same page?
So, I would have 100 questions to ask about the, the personal friction issue. Perhaps the, the best way for me to answer that is in a story. I had two staff members who were in conflict with each other. One was a director and one was a senior leader in the organization, an assistant superintendent. And they, they just didn't get along. They struggled and they both were very valuable to me, um, and to the district. So I worked with the association to make sure that each of their rights were clear and that they were each communicating to each other in a healthy way and consistent with those rights. The union was surprised that I would actually invest the time to make sure that, um, they were doing the skill building that they needed to be able to effectively work together and talk with each other and, but I, I found it important enough because they were both valuable enough to the district that I wanted to make sure that they were successful in, in, in getting along and get make, helping their work to be effective and to be productive. So I would, would do everything possible in those circumstances to prevent a talented person from leaving. You need your talent. Um, I, I'm very good at recruiting, um, highly effective, highly skilled and very diverse staff. And when I got to, to Framingham, I, I was the diversity in central office in some respects, certainly at the most senior level. But as I was leaving, now assistant superintendents who are Hispanic, who are Asian, um, who are African-American, Afro-Caribians, we brought diversity. We found extraordinary diversity. But you're always going to have some conflicts and you need, you need to be able to, to sometimes get directly involved in supporting it so you don't lose talented people. Solving problems that relate to, um, between the city and the school actually requires a similar capacity. You, you know, I use a simple formula, assess, challenge and, and support. So you assess the issue, make sure you understand what the conflict is, whether it's between two people or the city and the school district. Challenge the system, what, what do we need to do to make this different? What are the things that we could do that would push us forward? And then create the support necessary for people to do what's necessary to, to, uh, reach the, the objective that we have. That's how I imagine I would approach, um, my interactions, um, with the city. I assume that there will be points of conflict, there's some real things we need to work through. Uh, I want to enumerate them, but, um, but I anticipate being successful and, and being determined to make that happen.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Recognizing that, you know, obviously a superintendency requires a, a great deal of many different types of, of, of leadership and, and skill and experience. Um, at the end of the day, it is an educational position. Um, and, and having a very, I think, strong understanding of, of educational theory, um, of understanding pedagogy and, and how to communicate, uh, all of our, our initiatives and, and the work that we're doing in that kind of language, um, I think is important. Uh, could you share with us a little bit about your own kind of personal, uh, educational theory? What are the kind of overarching, um, aspects of, of what drive your decision-making when you're, can be, you know, when you're investigating new curriculum or when you're looking at different initiatives or, or technologies? What are the theories of learning, the theories of acquisition that, um, really guide you in making those decisions for a district?
Excellent question. Thank you very much. Because I wanted to be very clear that I'm an academic leader, you know, that I, I, it's perhaps slightly different than some who may, may, may be stronger in finance than they are in academics or, or other areas of specialty, but partially because of working in large systems and small systems and having been, uh, as building leader, uh, you know, as a director of diversity and having various roles, I kind of combine a lot, a lot of these elements. I spent, um, a good chunk of my early career training teachers around lesson planning, around how do you accelerate students' development? How do you manage mindsets? Um, with Carol Dweck's work and, and the work of, of Jeff Howard and others. And so I, I trained over 40,000 teachers in lesson planning, um, using the best mechanisms and techniques for lesson planning that, that existed. And that's the point at which I realized, wow, that's a lot of teachers. That's when I decided I should write Making Equity Work because I realized I had a sense of teachers around the country as they're training in 45 of the 50 states, understanding what they need and what their aspirations are and what do we need to provide for them and how as principals should we train ourselves to, to guide them. So for me, uh, from an educational theoretical standpoint, I, I've trained, um, teachers in differentiated instruction. I'm actually designing that same course to do in China, um, in the, in the near future because they're really needing to understand what we've begun to learn around differentiation. So I think that the elements of differentiation, we focus a lot now on universal design for learning, that, that, that those elements help us to be able to understand the child in a very particular way where we're understanding their learning interests, their learning style, their, um, their readiness in a way that allows us to match it with the appropriate process and content that'll help them to accelerate their learning. And we need to then be flexible around how do we show, how do they demonstrate what they've learned? And, and so for me, moving toward project-based learning is a way to make learning concrete and, and practical and real. And I don't think we do that enough. And so my philosophy is that, that the role of the teacher is to be a facilitator and help students to engage in learning that is tangible and real and exciting, that's, that connects them to the world around them in a way that is meaningful and useful to them ultimately when they go into the, into the world to come. So, um, I could say more, but hopefully it's, it's clear that, that, um, learning theory is at the core of my being as a psychologist and as an educator.
All right. We have a few extra minutes at this particular time. I would ask the committee, does any committee person have any overarching question that they'd like to see asked at this point before we? Mr. Lay?
A quick question for you, Dr. Scott. Technology, how important is it, do you think, for the school department to have it up to date?
Absolutely critical, um, for technology to be up to date. I think that, um, technology is a place where innovation is operationalized. And innovation to me is where we fascinate our students and continue to nurture our faculty is around helping them to be able to push the envelope around innovation, to continue to find what's exciting and interesting. That's what makes learning exciting for our students all the time. Technology always is pushing the envelope and helping us to think about new ways, uh, to make that happen. So in the districts that I've gone into, we have invested in building infrastructure. Where there was money, we invested the money. Where there was no money, we still found partners that would help us to build our infrastructure so that we could make sure that our teachers had what they need to be able to, um, use technology in as up-to-date a way as possible. So I love technology. I'm a technology person. I love innovation. I love bringing it in and I'm always finding partners who can help us do the things we may not be able to afford. And that helps us to be able to stay on the same cutting edge, um, as others. Uh, but I think I've created a reputation as being, um, a, a cutting-edge person. I, I've served on national committees for digital transformation and, uh, so I could talk about this for a while, but it's very important to me.
I have one, actually one question. You want to be superintendent of Lowell's school system. What role do you want the school committee to play in your superintendency? And what suggestions do you want? What support do you want from the council, uh, the school committee? So what do you expect from them? What kind of support would you need to be able to do your job here? You've been superintendent in two places. You talked about, uh, you know, changing attitudes of school committee people and what have you, but you have a plan and you want to see it through. So you're going to need us to react in a certain way or do you need that? Basically, your relationship with?
Absolutely. No, that's a wonderful question and it goes back to an earlier one. I'm not sure I said even enough about it, so I'm glad to have a chance to come back to it. I think that, um, my job is to really serve you and represent you as a committee. And, and you represent the community and are the voices of the community and your, your job is to communicate that in a way that I can translate into educational practice. That I can make sure that as a community is saying, hey, we need more for our kids, we have a vision for our kids to, to be able to come through our system and to reach all of our goals, my job is to translate that with whatever budget you give me into effective practice. And I have lots of experience with doing that, so I feel confident in my ability to do that. So my, my goal is to make sure you're translating to me the voices of the community. I'm out there too, listening to them and wanting to make sure that we're, we're tuning and hearing the same thing. But I want you to vigorously represent your, your communities and so that I'm hearing their voices. And then I want you to, um, join me in that vision-making process so that together we're seeing the vision for the future. I, I can lead that process. I can also lead and help us to be consensual because it's really important for the board to, to get to the place where we speak with one voice. I was very effective in doing that in Framingham, even though that wasn't the history that they had experienced before I got there. So I know how to do that and I would help us to sort of do that where we're honing our process of being able to talk with each other in ways that are focused on the critical issues and, and moving forward, uh, on our critical targets. The support that I need is simply to make sure that, you know, I'm in your head and you're in mine. You know, I would want to spend time with you individually to make sure I'm hearing your challenges and your priorities so they don't have to necessarily come out at the board table. That's not the place where we have those conversations. Here we want to talk about critical, um, targets and challenges and objectives and have the community hear us, think, think those things through in a productive way, but not necessarily to manage our individual issues and needs, but to manage our collective sort of focus on where we're going as a group. Does that, does that make sense? And so my job is to actually help you to do that. Um, you know, sort of as your senior administrator to sort of help us to be an effective, uh, ear to the community and effective voice back to the community on what are we doing and why and how are we going to do it effectively? So I, I would be calling upon you to, um, to, uh, be my backup, my support when we decide something, that I would want you to say, no, we're there. Yes, we, it was five to two, but now we're all there, um, so that we go forward collectively on whatever we do decide as a group. And that would be my hope. I, I would hope that as a group, if I offer direction and guidance around how we can be effective together, whether it's training, um, for us as a, as a group together, some consultation on how to do our planning, that you would think that through and offer me advice and guidance, but that you would go with me so that I could show you that, um, I can have a profound and positive effect on our visioning and on our planning and on our implementation. I'm a really good planner. I love to plan. I will ask all of my teams to plan and, and to make sure that they are thinking concretely about the action items that are necessary to accomplish our goals. And then I will be bringing that to you regularly. As I, I read a lot of your minutes and, and motions, my conclusion was if you're having to ask for those things and for some reason they're not coming to you in ways that they should, forgive the directness of that comment, but I would be bringing that information to you. So you shouldn't have to ask for reports on certain things that are going on in the district. They should be regular diet, um, of process that I bring to you to say, here's what my staff is doing now, here's what you need to know about the progress and as we move forward as a system. I would be bringing that to you, um, so that hopefully you would not need to be, uh, going to find it.
Well, thank, Dr. Scott, thank you very much. Well, Dr. Scott, thank you very much. This was quite good. You now have, as the candidate, five minutes to, you know, bring your questions to a close. Quite often, sometimes when we give a candidate this five minutes, they might want to bring up that question that was never asked, that, you know, that you really want, would love to receive, so you know, you could answer it in a way that would allow people to understand, you know, your programs, your purpose, what have you. So handle it any way possible, any way that you want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. As you frame it that way, I realize that there's something, going back to Ms. Martin's question, that I would love to go back to. I was thinking about how effective we were at changing the professional development model and process in Framingham. It was so well-received, I think, by our teachers. We made the teachers, each, and not just the teachers, but every, all of the seven stakeholders, the direct designers of their own professional development and often the providers of their professional development. And in so doing, really gave them the gift of the time and the structure so they could see themselves growing and really invest in it. It took them a while to get used to it, because they weren't used to someone saying, hey, it's your world, you know, how do you want to grow? What do you need? And it was exciting to be able to do that. So for me, the professional development, because I've spent my life, frankly, as a professional developer around the country in a variety of different settings and in other countries. So I know training. I know development. It's at the core of what I do. So when we wanted to think about the next generation of training for pedagogy, and editorially, here you have training for curriculum as a system, so far as I can tell, but you don't have training for pedagogy in the way in which I would want you to. We brought in Tufts, because they had Reader's Writers Workshop, an extraordinarily effective program, which was designed to make sure that every teacher had in their grade-level team or in their building, a master teacher that they could go and watch, or that could come to their class and give them coaching. They loved it so much. Our biggest problem was that the next school, the next school, when's our turn? Because I want to get the training too. All of our teachers were excited, because we brought it to them. It was highly useful and effective training, with really good coaches. They gave us their best, and our teachers absolutely loved it. But we were training teachers. We wanted each of them to, we wanted all of our teachers to be master teachers and to fall in love with teaching over again, which is what we do when we're in the classroom and we're teaching. And when we're excited about it, no matter how long our tenure is, we just fall in love with it over and over again. So what makes me unique is my focus on teachers and my capacity to coach really anyone in what they do and make them better, whether it's a teacher, a principal, a leader in the district. And for my principles as a coach, creating an aspiring leadership academy and working in leadership academies around the country, this really helped me to understand how you develop your next generation of leaders. How do you create succession planning? That allows you to hire from within and not to have to bring talented people from without, because you build the talent from within. And that's something that I know we have to work on here as well. And finally, in terms of what makes me unique, my system's focus is a meaningful tool that I bring that's not typical. Training as a psychologist in family systems therapy helps you to think about how all the parts work together and how to make them function more effectively. So I think that makes me unique, and it makes me an ideal candidate, given the nature of the experience that I have, the focus that I have on developing organizations and developing people. As I close, because I believe I probably should be closing, I would close by reminding you of my vision for Framingham. A place where communication is effective, transparent, not overwhelming, but present and supporting people. Particularly as they are trying to do their work as staff and trying to hold on to the vision that we have and trying not to be overloaded, because there's so much to do and our students' needs are so extensive. And also, my vision is a district where the finances are working effectively. We know how much we have, and we know what we want to do with it to reach our goals. And we use our dollars effectively to do that. And we negotiate. I will be lobbying effectively with our state legislatures and with our city to make sure we have the resources that are necessary. Because I have our state senators and House of Representatives on a personal basis, I know how to do that lobbying effectively. So those things are what make me unique. Those things are at the core of my vision. And my passions, you know, from the very beginning, are education at the core, helping people to develop psychology in terms of being able to build organizations that are healthy and whole, and also the arts and the notion of people being well-rounded and whole people, so that our educational process helps us produce the kind of students that we want to produce, that we're proud of, and that we feel like we've given them everything that they need to be successful in our system and not necessarily to have to go outside within our own towns or the other educational institutions that are also trying to do a good job. But we would partner with them, and we would come together with them, wrap our hands around all the children of the city, and be highly effective at what we're doing. I am so honored to be here. It moves me to be able to interact with you and to share with you on these topics and to consider the prospect of coming and spending time with you over the next five to 10 years. As we bring the high school online, as we work to build the motivation and the quality of instruction that is necessary, I couldn't be more thrilled about the possibility. And I'm just excited about your focus. Your questions have indicated to me where your hearts are. Being with your students has indicated where they are. And your teachers and your leaders have also made me, in fact, just fall in love with the district. So in that respect, it is, I hope, the beginning of great things. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. We'll take a break till 2:45.
Here's my question. How did Corbin let you know? How did Corbin let him know he could be over time? I've been timed against you for longer than I didn't have. Do you want me to time the answer? And how do you interrupt? That's the problem, you know?
Dr. Wade, welcome.
Thank you.
And on behalf of Lowell School Committee, I want to thank you for being a candidate for the superintendency of Lowell School System. The process that we're going to have here is that we allow the candidate to give opening remarks for about five minutes. Sometimes, you know, we have your biography, but the thing is, sometimes the candidate can give a better overview of who they are and what they want to have stated. Then each school committee person will ask one question. And then, we had time, we'll ask the second question. I don't know if we'll go beyond a third question, but that's possible. In any candidate asking a question, they might ask a follow-up question if they want clarification, okay? And then at the end, you have five minutes to give a closing thought. Quite often, sometimes, as a body, we might not ask that important question that candidates would like to hear, and you might give that as your closing statement. Or a clarification of something that was said during the interview. And, you know, then the reasons why you want to be superintendent Lowell School System. So with that, welcome, and we'll begin the process. Alseth?
I am, I am. Would you like me just to start right away with an opening?
Yes.
All right. So first, thank you for having me. It's been a great honor and a privilege to even be considered for this position. First, I want to recognize my beautiful wife is here with me. My wife and I have been together since we were 19 years old. So we do everything together, including this. She's truly my partner. So she's been along the journey throughout this process with me, and I want to recognize that. As you said, Mr. Mayor, I believe everybody has my resume, has my bio. Often, when people look at my resume, they see where I've been. They see the young age at which I entered the superintendency, and they make certain assumptions about me and about my background. Generally, I find those assumptions are actually quite inaccurate. I'm here today, interested in Lowell Public Schools, because 54% of our young people here in Lowell are children who are economically disadvantaged. Those children are me. I grew up in a single-parent household, one of four children. My mother was raising four kids on her own. We struggled with money, and I struggled in school. It wasn't until high school, when a wrestling coach, a really important wrestling coach, came into my life and changed my life forever. Middle school, I often say, if, you know, if I wasn't suspended from school altogether, I was usually held after school for detention, so... And it wasn't from lack of trying for my mother. She went back to school. She became a teacher herself. But she needed that connection in school for me. And my wrestling coach was able to provide that. So when I found myself back on a path to college and considering a college major, I chose to become a middle school teacher. The area of greatest struggle for me. And I chose to serve the young people who were also disconnected from school. I became a middle school principal. I became a director of middle schools. At this point, I believe I've held every position in public education there is. And I believe that Lowell Public Schools is the ultimate pinnacle of that journey. My wife and I have had a journey around the country. We've been a lot of places, had the opportunity to do a lot of good work. We're ready to conclude that journey by stabilizing ourselves and stabilizing a community over the long term. We're looking to be here, over the long term, to really support our young people here in Lowell and to make sure that Lowell, which we believe to be one of this country's great cities, can truly have a model school system that everyone else can learn from. So thank you. I'm looking forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call?
Mr. Nutter?
Good afternoon. You mentioned that you've been well-traveled. And previous school committees have a reputation for not keeping superintendents long. And looking at your resume, you've been in places three to four years. Would you talk about why you have moved and the reasons for the different movement? I was happy to hear you just mentioned, you know, the long term here. So what would your commitment, what would you like your commitment to be here in the city? And what would you want from a school committee to support you in being successful to achieve that?
Thank you. Thank you, Committee Member Nutter. Let me take you through that journey, if I could. And I appreciate the question. So I became a school teacher, actually, just a few miles outside of the town I grew up in. My wife and I were newlyweds. She married a school teacher. She didn't know the journey she was about to be on. I coached wrestling. I taught middle school science. A few years into that tenure, my mother-in-law was diagnosed with cancer. I left the classroom reluctantly. I left the classroom reluctantly, because we were moving back to help care for my mother-in-law. I didn't have a job when I left teaching. I was fortunate enough to find a position as an assistant principal right around the corner from my mother-in-law's home. My mother-in-law lost that battle, two years in. And again, fortunately, I was offered a fellowship at Harvard. My wife and I talked long and hard and decided at that point that that fellowship was an opportunity that we couldn't pass up, that juncture in our lives. We had moved to Bethlehem, a city not too different from Lowell. Mill City here, that's a steel city. And, but we relocated. We came to Cambridge, relocated, took advantage of that fellowship. That fellowship provided me with the opportunity to earn a master's degree and a doctorate free of charge at Harvard. That was a fellowship I didn't believe I could pass up, an opportunity we didn't believe we could pass up. Part of that fellowship sent me to Florida. Worked in Miami. Had the great opportunity to work in the fourth-largest school district in the country. Worked for the National Superintendent of the Year at that time. 350,000 young people in Miami. It was a great experience working alongside the superintendent. That fellowship was actually only supposed to be six months. I extended that, stayed for a year. At the conclusion of that year, the superintendent was moving on, and he and I had a great conversation. And he told me this. He said, "I believe, at some point, you're going to lead a school district." I was 27, 28-years-old at that time, but he said, "But if you're going to lead a school district, you should walk in the shoes of those whom you're going to..." you should walk in the shoes of those whom you're going to lead. Be a principal." At that time, I didn't know what to make of that. It was best recommendation I've ever received in terms of my career. Growing up in Delaware, there's not too many large cities in Delaware. As you know, the home city is Philadelphia. I know, I'm going to, I hope I don't lose your vote by saying this. I'm a Phillies fan, I'm an Eagles fan, I'm a... So when he said, "Become a principal," my first inclination, my only inclination, was to serve as a principal in Philadelphia's public schools. I was fortunate enough to be asked to take on one of the largest middle schools in the school district of Philadelphia. 1,200 young people, 34 different languages spoken in Woodrow Wilson Middle School. I was able to, fortunately, with the support of hard-working teachers, students, families, we were able to accomplish some great things at that school, a school that had stagnated for a long time. A school that, under the previous accountability system, was characterized as chronically underperforming. If you remember back in those days, adequate yearly progress was the name of the game. We were able to achieve that for the first time in a long time at the school. And I was asked to then take on the director of middle schools for our underperforming middle schools. The culmination of that year, I was asked to become an assistant superintendent. I was asked to actually supervise 37 schools, 30,000 young people in the northeast region of Philadelphia, which included my school. In four years in Philadelphia, I had the great honor and opportunity to receive two promotions in four years. As an assistant superintendent in Philadelphia, with the results that our hard-working teachers and principals, our families and our students were achieving, I had the great fortune of others looking to our work. Search firm contacted me about the opportunity in Santa Fe. We had never been to New Mexico. Had never been to New Mexico. We didn't know what to make of New Mexico. Search firm at that time said, "Give it a shot." We went out there. We met with the school board, met with the community, an extensive process. And we were fortunate enough to be offered that opportunity. We're from the East Coast. We were in Philadelphia. Philadelphia is the center point between where my wife grew up in Bethlehem and where I grew up in Delaware. It was a risk to go out. I accepted a two-year contract. Went out for two years. I extended that contract two times. In Santa Fe, the North Star for us was the graduation rate. Santa Fe was, is the capital city of New Mexico, second-largest media market in the state. It was perceived as the lowest-performing school district in the state. The school district was sitting on a 56.5% graduation rate when I was offered the job as superintendent. The commitment to the community was to reduce the dropout rate, increase the graduation rate, and make for Santa Fe a world-class school system that would match the world-class city that Santa Fe was. We became the fastest-improving school district in the state. We exceeded the state average in graduation rate. Four years was seeing through a full cohort of young people across the high school stage. At one point in Santa Fe, actually a district that was mired in some real difficult financial circumstances, something that is likely familiar to you as school committee members here in Lowell. But at the same time, we are broadening opportunities for young people, creating new programs. At one point during my superintendency, we created a new program in Santa Fe for youngsters who didn't have the opportunity to achieve through the new system we had designed for the city. There were over 1,000 young people still on the streets, dropped out of school. So we created a new school. A blended learning model, meaning online and in-school, together, supporting young people in a different way to re-engage them so that they could realize the promise of a high school diploma. Created the school, and I couldn't afford a principal. I assigned myself as the principal of that school at the same time that I served as superintendent. The Santa Fe Public Schools is actually a very, very similar size to Lowell, 14,000 young people. And I served simultaneously as principal. So leaving Santa Fe was not an easy decision. I had signed, I had extended my contract twice. I was, had the great fortune. In my last year, the mayor in Santa Fe nominated me for State Superintendent of the Year. We were really making great progress, and I felt at that time, I felt at that time, we had achieved such progress that it was sustainable into the next tenure of the next superintendent. My school board at that time asked me, "Let them know as soon as I knew" that I wasn't going to be extending my contract. And I notified them that I wasn't going to be doing that. At that time, so very early on, in combination with the several of my school board members, one was, ran for the State House, was elected to the State House, another was leaving the school board. So we thought it was an opportunity to build on the great work that our community had done. 56% graduation rate to over 70% graduation rate. We had dropped the dropout rate by 25%. We had achieved some really important things for our community. Three bonds had passed in four years. We built two brand-new schools. We did another $180 million of construction work. We had initiated a lawsuit against the state, which ultimately was won in 2018 to compel the state to fund our public schools. We felt we were ready. We felt we were at a place to sustain those results. And my wife and I, together with the community, made a decision to explore other opportunities. With those results, we had lots of options. A firm in San Francisco. Many of you work in the private sector. The private sector can offer you anything and everything to get you to agree to sign on with them. It was a learning analytics firm, a startup firm in San Francisco and Silicon Valley, the office right down the street from LinkedIn's office. Really exciting opportunity, it seemed to me, to be able to support urban school districts across the country, to support the growth of that company, and a really enticing offer. My office was in San Francisco. I lived in Florida. My, the airplane was my mode of travel from meeting to meeting. It sounded great to everybody. And I will, even to my wife, when we lived on the beach. It wasn't where my passion was. A few months into making that decision, it became quite clear to me that I needed to be connected to kids. My work is in public service. Important partners in the private sector. I learned a considerable amount. Feeding into sales collateral and building out marketing plans, that, looking at P&amp;L sheets. That was all great work, important work. But my work, my work, my passion was in schools. We thought back to our time in Cambridge, the opportunity to be in Massachusetts. At that time, when we did, when I was doing my graduate work, my wife and I always said, "We're going to come back to New England. We're going to come back to Massachusetts." Whatever may be, the opportunity in Boston Public Schools presented itself. And at that time, where we were considering different opportunities, the Boston Public Schools called and offered the opportunity to support young people across the city of Boston. Right now, I support 11,000 young people in our high schools in the city of Boston. Great opportunity. And that was an opportunity that I thought and I felt were more aligned with the work that I had done and where my heart and where my passion is and who I was as that child, thinking about what I was going to do with my career. Best decision I made. And I can tell you this. All across that journey, we've always said, "Moving is not for us." We're looking for that place where we can stay long-term, where we can be of service to a community, where there's a community that's a fit for us, both personally and professionally, where we can become members of a community long-term, where we can grow our family, where we can plant roots. We were actually, began this journey exploration of this a month before, I believe, even applying for the job at, looking at houses in Lowell. For those of you that are not familiar with Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, it could very well be Lowell of Pennsylvania. This feels like home to us. It had a home feel. We would probably already own a home here if the houses didn't sell so quickly. Whoever got 53 Fairmount. You took that one from us. We'll try to, but we know there are other great homes there. And I will tell you this. Biggest learning, all of that work, the biggest learning I had is that the superintendency requires more than four years of service. This is a 10-year job, a 10-year commitment. And I believe through the process of house hunting, we actually, most recently, visited the house of one of your former superintendents. And I believe his tenure was 12 years. And the realtor told me, sent a text to my wife. She said, "That's the home of our beloved superintendent." I took the gentle jab. And we'll tell you, 10, 12 years feels really good to me. If we can do 20 together, that would be great. But the last part of your question was about the role with the school committee. I see the superintendent and school committee as being another marriage of sorts. It's a choice between the two of us to work through both the ups and downs to build a partnership. Sometimes that requires us to go to counseling. I found great value through retreats with my school committee. I had an elected school board in Santa Fe. I will tell you this. Many people thought that school board was dysfunctional to the point where the private businesses in the community put together their own panel of candidates prior to me getting there to try to create some stability among the school board. Two years in, after the work we did, their hard work, they became School Board of the Year in New Mexico. That's their work. That's their hard work. Together, it truly is a marriage. And that goes two ways. And I would be looking for, from the school committee, that type of partnership. I have broad shoulders, I have thick skin. I will take bullets for our kids all day long. But it's not just me, it's all of us. You as governance, myself as management, the important work of those individuals in our classrooms to serve our kids. And it all has to work together over the long term. Thank you, Mr. Nutter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Teachers are looking for leadership, okay? Someone who can direct the system, someone that can give them the support that they need. Show that as a superintendent, you have, to show that you have, as a superintendent, an understanding of what teachers need to provide quality education for our students. I'd like to, you know, some ideas of how you can demonstrate that to our teachers. But at the end of that, if I were to go to a school after a year of your superintendency and talk to several teachers, what would they say about you regarding your first year here in Lowell? How would they see you as a superintendent? How would they see you as a person giving them the support that they need to do the job properly?
So I am a teacher. That's how I identify. That's how I came into this work. I left the classroom reluctantly. It's still the most fun job I've ever had. I will tell, there's, I had an opportunity over the course of this process to meet with many of your principals. I had the opportunity just a few days ago to go to some of your schools. Some of your great teachers that I had a chance to visit are here today. One of your principals said this to me, and it was pretty powerful. She said, "You know, here in Lowell, we value autonomy. But unfortunately, that autonomy is starting to become neglect. Neglect of the support that our schools need, that our teachers need in the classroom, and that our principals need to lead." That's a pretty powerful statement that resonated with me, resonated with me because I believe that teaching and learning are at the core of our work. Everything we do has to support what happens in the classroom. My first year as superintendent in Santa Fe, I was, I visited every school in the first two days of school. 30 schools in Santa Fe, more schools than here in Lowell. I was at every school the first two days of school. I told you already, I had appointed myself to also serve as a principal midway through my tenure as superintendent. I was in schools regularly. People ask me kind of what my leadership style is, and I heard this quote, and I think it relates to your question, Mr. Mayor. "Lead with a teacher's heart and a principal's perspective." And it's kind of how I envision my approach to the superintendency. A teacher's heart, caring about every single kid, everything that they need. Everything that they need inside and outside of the classroom. That's my responsibility as a superintendent. I can't do that without being present, without talking with our kids. Every job I've had, regardless of the size of the system or the amount of responsibility, I've mentored young people. I've got a young person right now at our vocational high school that I'm mentoring. When I go back to Boston next week, I'll be helping him with his capstone project. I have 11,000 students. Mentoring young people is something that I do in every job that I've had. Teachers will see that. Supporting teachers directly, coaching them in the classroom. One of your principals and I actually reached back to him and said how much I appreciated it. During the course of touring the school and walking in classrooms and visiting classrooms, he picked up the marker, took to the whiteboard, and taught the class. Taught the class. Your teacher's right here, whose classroom he was in. He appreciated it when his principal could teach. I appreciated seeing him teach. And I also have high confidence in my ability to teach and don't hesitate to picking up the marker and teaching the class when needed. Our principals will see me in schools regularly. Right now, I don't even keep an office in Boston Public Schools. I have offices in some of our schools. I have a shared office at our headquarters. Mr. Dakota and Mr. Hoey had a chance to come to Boston. We appreciated your visit. Because I'm in schools. I'm in schools. That's where I believe the core of our work occurs. I will tell you this. I believe that teaching is the interaction between the teacher and the student around the content. So when I say the core of our work happens in the classroom, everything that I do as superintendent and every decision that is made within our district while I'm superintendent will be built around that interaction. The relationships between kids and the adults around them. The relevance of the curriculum that's in front of them and the rigor of that coursework so that they're truly ready for the next step of their journey. Did I get every part of your question, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry. The final part is, what will the teachers say? In other words, if I'm now in the building after that year that you've described, what will they say?
Yeah. So here's an interesting bit of data. I believe that you inspect what you expect. I believe you inspect what you expect. And in Santa Fe, we expected that not only would our schools be the highest performing, but we would also be the best place to work. Our school board actually put forward a policy bringing the joy back to the classroom. We wanted our teachers to enjoy their work. So we measured staff morale. Measured it every year based on, based on surveys. We still had some work to do, but some of the data I was able to share with the Blue Ribbon Committee clearly showed that at the end of each year, we were making progress in every area of morale. And I believe that's a testament to the hard work of our schools, our principals and our teachers, but also the conditions to succeed that we built around them. What I would hope our teachers would say here is the superintendent is a teacher first. The superintendent cares about kids. The superintendent cares about kids. And if I care about kids in the classroom and I'm providing what our students need in the classroom, he's going to support me till the end of earth. And I will tell you this, I will have their backs. And if our teachers say that the superintendent has their back, I'll be pretty proud at the end of the year.
Mr. Dakota?
Hi, how you doing, Dr. Boyd? Good to see you again.
You as well, Mr. Dakota. Thank you for coming to Boston.
It was our pleasure indeed. Recently, there's been a considerable amount of discussion of trying to return to neighborhood schools in Lowell. Given our budgetary encumbrances and space availability in some of our neighborhoods, how active would you pursue something like that, and do you think that's a great idea?
I will tell you, I've had a lot of experience, a lot of opportunity to work in organizations that require significant improvement. In every instance of my experience, the answers to that improvement existed in the organization themselves. My role as a leader was to simply elicit those innovative ideas and to provide a framing of those ideas so that we could move forward. I had a chance to hear that idea. I believe that idea actually began with staff in the district. There are certain staff members that have put together a significant amount of research around what that might look like and the impact that might create or have on our young people. I believe there are pros and cons to it, as I understand it. My understanding is there would be significant savings in terms of finances, may even be up to a million dollars in savings in terms of transportation and other, other operational efficiencies that are created. However, at the same time, it'll also require significant shifts and transitions for our young people. I want to say the number that was quoted to me is that it could be upwards of almost forty percent of young people might have to shift schools. What I would say is that any idea that comes from our staff, people that are here, people that are on the ground, is worth exploring. But we've got to explore both the benefits and also the downsides, and we need to look at it honestly. A transition for a young person is difficult to undertake. So here with this move, there would be a couple of questions I would ask. One, what happens if you actually phase it in over time? Now, obviously, we won't get the savings to the immediate year budget, but would we actually reduce the transitions if you phased it in over time so that the transitions occurred at the juncture of transition for a kid? When a kid was transitioning schools naturally, we shift the zone. Second, I will tell you, we're doing really good work in Lowell, but all is not well for all of our children. There are forty-seven different languages spoken in our schools here in Lowell, and there are some significant achievement and opportunity gaps that persist across our district and within our schools. And I think equity has to be at the top of our conversation with every decision that we make. So I would also ask the question of what do those shifts, while they may lead to operational efficiency, and we can overcome the transitions for kids by phasing it in, what does it mean in terms of shifting demographics in our schools? If it brings us closer to truly inclusive environments, where our schools reflect our city as a whole, then I would say it's something we've got to look at even deeper. If it's something that creates more segregation in our schools, where our schools reflect our city less than they do right now, then that might be a non-starter for me, despite the operational efficiencies that are created. But I would also say that any idea that's created and built by our staff, and this is one that I think has been studied extensively by some staff members, when we put them back to the table to try to figure out these added challenges, they'll figure it out. And when they're given the priority and the non-negotiable of equity of being at the forefront, I think they'll figure that one out too, because our schools right now, I had the chance to visit Stoklosa, and then I had the chance to visit Pine Arts. Very, very different schools that aren't that far apart from one another. The demographics of the schools are significantly different. The needs of the young people are significantly different, but these are two schools that are housed in the same city, not too far apart from one another. And to me, I think we need to start to look at that as well. Make sure that we're truly creating inclusive environments for all of our young people, because I believe that diversity is our greatest asset here in Lowell, and leveraging that diversity is our greatest path forward to improvement for our schools.
Very much. I very much agree with you. Thank you very much for your answer.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota. Appreciate it.
Mr. Hardy?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Boyd. I think you've got a pretty good sense of many of the issues that we're facing here in Lowell. So I'd like, my question really is looking for you to pick two
Okay.
...that you see are particularly compelling. And one of them will be one you're ready to hit the ground running and solve for us, and how your experience and knowledge would enable that. And the other is one that you feel will be particularly challenging for you.
So two challenges, all right, one that's easier to solve and another, so the two challenges I'll give you are the persisting opportunity gaps across our schools. That's the one that's going to take us some work to solve. That's going to require some significant work over time, but it has to be at the forefront of our minds. The second are the continuous budget deficits that we've been facing. And now, some people have told me, well, these budget deficits, that is the biggest and most difficult challenge. I'll tell you this, that's technical work, and technical work, we can solve with technical answers, meaning others have solved that before, and we can work from that same cookbook to solve that problem. It's not going to be easy, but we can get after it immediately. So let me take you through that one, and then we'll go into the opportunity gaps, which I think actually need to frame the work that we have in front of us. The budget right now in Lowell Public Schools is built on an incremental basis. What that means is that the budgeting process takes last year's budget, takes the next year's revenue, and we simply look at what we spent money on last year, and we make adjustments based on the revenue that's coming in the next year. For you, as you've experienced, there's been less revenue coming in to cost. Costs are going up, revenue's not keeping pace. Although, good work with the last budget meeting, that seemed like it went pretty smoothly. There's a, so now, if we use an incremental budget, it doesn't allow us to think differently about how we're spending dollars, and when we have fewer resources coming in, unfortunately, it requires us to give the message to the community of constant cuts. I've used the terminology of Chicken Little Syndrome. It feels like the sky is falling on us. Not too different to what I encountered in Santa Fe. Santa Fe was a $170 million total operating budget, teachers hadn't received raises in five years, costs were increasing at a pace that was far exceeding revenue. In Santa Fe, New Mexico's system was a hundred, 100% general fund funded by the state. Here, a little bit different, but some of those same issues. So the way we come after this is with what I would call a three-pronged approach. The first is with a clear plan, where we prioritize those things that are important to the community. Instead of starting with an incremental budget, we start with what we call a zero-based budget. We're not going to look at what the revenue is, instead, we're going to look at what our strategy is. What are our priorities? Let's map our strategy. Our strategy then leads to certain actions. Those actions are attached to costs, and those costs then lead to outcomes. So when we make decisions, because we can't fund everything, the decisions we're making are about what outcomes aren't we going to achieve, and what strategy aren't we going to employ. Leads to some different decisions, because then, instead of talking about the cuts, what we're talking about is the investment we're making. Because here, I will tell you, while money has been tight, we are still investing $200 million in our young people, and our families want to see where that investment is going. And when we can put forward a plan that has been built with the community, then we can talk about what we're investing in and what we're building up. That plan is going to be essential. I've struggled to find the strategic plan for Lowell Public Schools through the course of my research, and I've struggled even more to find the alignment of the budget with that plan. You do have a 200-page budget document. I spent many a quiet night reading your budget, and I didn't find that connection. Second part of that three-pronged approach requires collaboration. So a zero-based budgeting platform built on a school-based budgeting system. I believe that the people who are closest to our children know best what decisions to make for our children. Teachers, principals, and parents coming together to make decisions for their kids that are going to have a real impact on programming for kids. When we move to this type of system in prior districts that I've been in, we use this type of system in Boston currently. Parents come to the table. When parents have a voice that leads to decisions that matter for them, they come to the table. Guess what also doesn't occur? Lines of people coming to the school committee when you're approving your budget, because they're weighing in on the actual decisions that matter closest to their children, and different decisions can be made at different schools because there are different needs. When we free up the dollars to allow schools to make decisions and support them around making those decisions, that's how we're in a system of autonomy and not a system of neglect. That's how we shift back to a system where our principals, our teachers, and our parents feel supported, instead of feel like something is constantly being taken from them. The third part of that three-pronged approach requires advocacy. Every year, as superintendent, we built a legislative agenda together. The school committee approves that legislative agenda. What bills are we going to support? And two, what bills are we going to write? How are we going to work alongside our local delegation to make sure that the right bills are in front of the House and Senate, that we're there supporting them with the full voice of the district based on board vote? And how are we going to help them to realize if a certain bill is not there but needs to be there, to attach it to someone who has that interest so we can help them with that? Taking a real leading edge in advocacy, and I've heard, and we've got a great champion in Mr. Samaras, so to help kind of, help us through that process and champion through that process, and those assets are right here. The Lowell delegation, as I've heard it, is extremely supportive. Your city manager has as much expertise in this as any cities, so we have a lot of resources there. And school committee members, you have all been advocating different positions. As I've seen, it's allowed me to get a little bit of insight into your individual as well as collective platforms. If that doesn't work, as it didn't work well enough for us in Santa Fe, as I told you, we ended up, the school board initiated a lawsuit, $100,000 to investigate the potential for a lawsuit against the state, because there was a constitutional requirement in New Mexico for sufficient funding of public education. Now, $100,000 is not going to fund a lawsuit, but by putting that foot forward, what we found is others came to the table. The lawsuit that was ultimately won, Santa Fe was just a party to the lawsuit. They were just a party on the plaintiff line. They weren't the plaintiff by themselves. Other parties came. The Mexican-American Legal Defense Education Fund, the Center for Law and Poverty, all came to the table. They won that lawsuit. Took them four years, but that was a necessary step in New Mexico, all built around a consistent strategy of advocacy, which I think is a necessary part of that. In order to get to meaningful advocacy, we've got to show clear operational efficiency, which means that every dollar is attached to our plan, that people around the system have an opportunity to make decisions with the dollars, and those decisions are being heard through school-based budgeting, and then we can truly advocate. I always say, people want to bet on a winning horse. And when I can advocate from a basis of high performance in our schools, that's a pretty easy thing to advocate at the legislature. All right, then the second one was the opportunity gap. So let me give you this data point. The graduation rate here in Lowell has declined from the past year. Still at a 79.6% graduation rate, which is good work and hard work on behalf from our teachers and our students, but it's a decline from the past year. Unfortunately, our economically disadvantaged students are only graduating at 70%. Our English learners, 54. Our special education students, 43. Those gaps should not be tolerable to anybody in the district, and I know it's not tolerable to our teachers and our principals, because they spoke to it in every school that I was in. We have to do something about bringing equity to our system and closing those gaps for our young people. Without fail, every educator I talked to in Lowell spoke to that. Let me give you another data point. So while we're graduating young people from high school at 79.6%, Massachusetts has an indicator that they call the mass core programming. This is the programming that Massachusetts believes youngsters need to participate in in order to be ready for college in the next phase of life. As a district, 79.6% of our young people are graduating, we heard those gaps. Only 30% of those young people are completing the mass core programming. Hispanic students are only completing mass core programming at 21.9%. So gaps, not only in outcomes, but also in access. Our English learners at 17% of mass core programming. These gaps are not intentional. They're unintentional, but they, the outcomes are what they are. I believe disparate outcomes mean disparate treatment, and we need to get after that disparate treatment in a strategic way. It requires us to confront the beliefs that may be unintentional and may be subconscious. We need to get after that in some real important training. We need to have those conversations and be conscious to bring to our consciousness our own biases that may be leading to this. And we also need to support one another through the training that's required to serve young people to overcome these gaps, because these gaps also reflect significant gaps in skills. And those gaps and skills have to be built over time. I support 11,000 high school students right now. I can't tell you we've closed all these gaps, this is at the forefront of our work in Boston as well. But I will tell you this, when a young person comes to our high school door in ninth grade, great teachers can pick up a year and a half worth of growth, right? So a year of time, a year and a half worth of growth means that's some pretty great teaching. Well, if you map that out over four years, that means great teaching can only cover two years of skill deficit. Many of our young people are coming into our high schools in Boston at less than a seventh grade level. I would go so far to submit to you that many of the young people are coming to Lowell's high school more than two years behind grade level as well. So simply talking about it is not going to solve it. It's about an investment in early childhood programming, serving youngsters sooner and serving youngsters in a more intensive way when they first come to us. Supporting our elementary schools to make sure that every youngster exceeds and succeeds their grade level requirements and promotes on to the next grade, ready for the next grade's learning. And also making sure that we've got some intensive interventions in place in our schools so that we can support our teachers with, providing our youngsters with teaching at their readiness level while our teachers are providing them with teaching at grade level. I will tell you, a number one frustration I hear from teachers all of the time, particularly our math teachers. You're asking me to teach Algebra II, but this young person has not even had Algebra I. In my heart, I need to serve this young person. So what are our teachers going to do? Out of the goodness of their heart, they're going to have to shift to where our youngster's readiness is. That's not a fair question to put in front of our teachers. We need to make sure we provide those interventions in addition to good teaching in our classrooms. And a smile from our math teacher in the back. I'm going to, I'm going to take that with me, my friend. I want to appreciate that, because our teachers can't do it all on their own. All right, I would tell you, it takes five things here to overcome these gaps. It's going to require high-quality teaching, which is going to require high-quality professional learning. We're going to have to do that, we're going to have to provide that. It's going to require strategic interventions. We've got to provide our youngsters with those interventions outside of the classroom with where they are on their readiness level, meaning if a youngster's in ninth grade, they get ninth grade learning, and if their readiness is at sixth grade, they get sixth grade II at the same time, which is going to require us to extend learning. We've got to extend learning time for our kids, which is going to require an investment, but if we've got priorities, and that's one of our priorities, then we will invest in it. It's going to require us to support our youngsters with all of their non-instructional needs. There is a cartoon that I often refer to, which is a young person coming into school with a whole bunch of suitcases. Those suitcases are labeled hunger, thirst, homelessness, lack of sleep, and the young person says this, "Mr., can you help me with my baggage? I'm late to math class." Now, it's a cartoon, but that's a pretty powerful statement, and that's what our youngsters come with. They don't know what it is that they're experiencing, but I can tell you from personal experience that those things get in the way of learning. For me, it showed up and it surfaced in behavior. I had some anger challenges that unfortunately showed up in the classroom because of some things that weren't happening for me outside of the classroom. We need to support our youngsters with their needs non-instructionally as well. Social, emotional learning is kind of the catchphrase of that. We need to support our youngsters with what they need socially and emotionally so that they can succeed in the classroom. And the last part of that is making sure that we can engage our families. My mother came to the table every time there was a challenge with me in school, and she was told how long I was going to be suspended and how long I was going to be held after school. That's not a partnership. Our parents are the experts in our children, we're the experts in education. When you bring that two together, some powerful things can happen. My mother became a teacher, I told you later in life, she's my hero. If she was engaged as a partner, something could have happened differently for me before I had to fortunately engage a Hall of Fame wrestling coach by chance. And if we can do those five things, high-quality teaching, strategic interventions, extended learning time, non-instructional support, and family engagement, then I believe we can close those gaps for all of our young people, and we can truly leverage the rich diversity that exists here in Lowell to set a model for the rest of the state. That's the long-term one. That's not happening overnight.
Mr. Hoey?
Thank you. Dr. Boyd, the first minute here will be about me a little bit, and then I'll have my question at the end of it. They allowed me to ask different questions than the other candidate. Number one, if I ever go to Dudley Square again, I will not have meatballs, I will go with the catfish. But thank you for everything you've done for us down there. But I want to go back, 24 years ago, I run for the school committee for the first time. And at that time, it was all about reading. I got a bicycle built for two, I put my daughter on the back of it, and we drove around passing out free books, and people were donating books to me, and I kept out passing books, and I got elected. My question's going to come on the special education. I've always been a guy that believes that, and this city's awesome, we had Head Start before, and they're rebuilding that, and I don't want to get into that whole story, but we have a great pre-K, you've got kindergarten, you've got first, first grade. To me, there's nobody better in the whole, whole state. I just feel in special ed that we don't have enough dyslexic help for the kids that have dyslexia, and I think after the first grade, if they can't read at that first grade level, you know, like that No Child Left Behind, we push them to the second grade, and then I think that's failure for that child. That's how I feel. So with that said, my question to you would be, we do not have a special ed director, we're going to be losing one actually really soon. So what would you be looking for in hiring a new special ed director?
So first, thank you, Mr. Hoey, for coming down to visit us in Boston. I didn't think your meatball sandwich looked very good. Mr. Dakota and I enjoyed our catfish sandwiches, but I do also want to recognize that you have the best haircut in the room. So yes, I did hear that you're going to be losing a special education director. I had a chance to actually meet with the one you have currently. I'll tell you, let me tell you a little bit about my philosophy of special education, and that'll start to drive kind of an understanding of the type of individual we're looking for. I believe number one is that we over-identify far too many youngsters in special education, and we have, when youngsters are identified for special education, unfortunately, it becomes a lifetime sentence for them. I think we need to do more in terms of intervention upfront to make sure that we're identifying only those youngsters who truly need those services. Unfortunately, what we see is the, some of the same disparities we're seeing in performance in identification for special education, meaning their special education ident- Meaning their special education identification starts to skew along racial lines, where students of different racial groups are being identified at disproportionately high numbers for special education services. We're seeing it in Boston. We saw it in every school district I've been in. I would put forward to you that likely we're seeing the same thing here in Lowell without me even having that data in front of me. So one is that we have to start to look at the work we're doing for youngsters before they become identified. And we need to look with a clear lens and a laser-like focus at who our youngsters are who are in programming. Two, when a youngster is identified with a disability, that shouldn't change the expectations we have for them. The data I just put forward to you in terms of the disparities in achievement and disparities of outcomes should not necessarily occur for youngsters with disabilities. And that may seem counterintuitive to some people. Well, this youngster has a disability. Doesn't that mean something? Not if we have the right accommodations in place. That's the purpose for the accommodations, to level the playing field for them, to make sure that our youngsters can achieve at the same high levels. Those expectations of high achievement for every kid has to be there. So identifying youngsters appropriately, having high expectations for all kids. And I believe as many youngsters as possible should be included in the general education setting, regardless of whether they were identified with a disability. Which means that what we need to do is make sure that we're training all of our teachers to be able to support the diverse learners that are in the room, including youngsters with the multitude of disabilities. Dyslexia is one. I would tell you that's seeming to grow. Autism is another. That's seeming to increase over time. We need to support our teachers by providing them with the knowledge and skills they need to support a changing student's body in their classroom. At the same time, we also have to provide the resources of what we call co-teaching or team teaching. I actually taught as a co-teacher when I was a teacher in middle school. I didn't know when I took the job. I was a science teacher, and all of a sudden, one of the classes that I had showed up that I had Mrs. Best Pitch teaching with me. Now, I'll tell you, this is the wrong way to do co-teaching, but it was powerful for me as a teacher. Ms. Best Pitch came to me before a school year, and she explained who she was. She explained to me what the classroom was. Called it Teaching Approach to Mastery back then in Delaware. We call it co-teaching now. Two teachers, different skill sets. I was the science teacher. She was the special educator. We had an inclusion classroom that included two-thirds general education. One-third of the student population was identified with IEPs. We worked together to plan every lesson. Every assessment that we gave, she looked at, made sure that we were providing the appropriate accommodations. I became better at what we call differentiating instruction, individualizing instruction for our young people based on that collaboration with Mrs. Best Pitch. And what she told me, and I haven't kept in touch with Ms. Best Pitch, so if she's watching out there, hopefully she can still concurs. Because you know, there's millions and millions watching World Five. She told me she became better at science. And she was someone who grew up on a farm and really valued her experiences growing up, but she wasn't a trained science teacher. I was that. So together, we were able to provide a better experience, not only for the special education students in the classroom, but also the general education students. And I will tell you this. I wasn't the best teacher my first year, but I really prided myself on the fact that if anybody came into my classroom, you wouldn't be able to tell who the young people were or who the teacher was and what their role was. Two teachers, a group of students, included in an environment of high expectations where everyone benefits. That's where I would like to see us move here. So I would be looking for in a special education director, someone that understands that, understands good teaching, understands the role of special educators and general educators in serving all of our kids, understands the needs to look at data and to truly be, have a critical lens on who's getting services where. And someone at the end of the day that has high expectations for every single kid and is going to fight tooth and nail to make sure every kid gets the services they need. Those people are out there. We'll find them. But I've also heard you've got a great special education director with you, so maybe she hears that and says, hey, I would like to stay in Lowell.
Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you. Dr. Boyd, as you may already know, that what triggered the crisis that we have here in Lowell Public School, we are looking for superintendent. We lost one, and so here we are. At this point, I'd like to think that you are going to be our next superintendent. And knowing that the state of situation that we are in right now, what makes you think that you have the confidence to, to lead, to take Lowell Public Schools and put on, on your back and, and move it to a better state of situation? And to ensure that you would stay long enough to see the outcome, twelve years, like you said, ten to twelve years, of your, to see the outcome of your work, who or what single interest group would you like to see happy under your leadership?
Let me take the last one first. Single interest group? Students and families. That's one to me. Students and families are pleased with the services that they're receiving, then I think at the end of the day, we've achieved what we set out to do. Our students have to come first in every decision. And I, I said before, you know, I think it goes hand in hand. Having the highest performing school district requires us to also have the best place to work. So I think at the end of the day, if we're serving our students and families well, then our teachers are going to be happy. Everyone's going to be happy because, quite frankly, what we know is people want to be a part of a winning team. And we're, we're winning in the classroom. We're winning as a district. We're winning as a city. Now, I often talk about my mother. I say, you know, my mother passed many years ago, but she's with me in every decision I make. I wasn't a young person that carried myself with a lot of confidence. My mother used to tell me this, believe in yourself or no one else will. Now, people often look at me and they say, how do you walk so tall? Well, because if I don't believe in myself, I know no one else will. Important mentor of mine that I shared with you before, the one who recommended for me to go to, to become a principal. We were dealing with some very, very significant financial challenges. This was the start of the Great Recession. If you remember, that started in Florida with the housing crisis permeating throughout our cities. We didn't know what was happening because Miami was one of the first hit. He was being blamed constantly for the financial challenges. He won National Superintendent of the Year that year, but he was being blamed constantly for the financial challenges that were being created around the country. And he told me this, and I remember it to this day. He actually wrote a book, and I think there's a quote in the book about it. He said, never become Superintendent Tweed Jacket. What he meant by that is this. He said, you're going to be the CEO of a Fortune 500 company. You're going to likely be the CEO of the largest employer in your community. You don't walk around with your hat in hand asking for handouts any more than the CEO of Fidelity is going to do or the CEO of the hospital is going to do because you need to walk around in a way that shows that you're capable of the $200 million, in this case of Lowell, being under your care because those are taxpayer dollars, and they require you to know. When I took my first superintendency in Santa Fe, I talked with him. And he said this to me. I said, we're negotiating a contract, you know? And I hadn't been a superintendent before. I reached out to him. I said, help me through this. He said, one, he said, take whatever they give you because you've never been superintendent before, and they're taking a risk on you. And he said this, number two, don't take the job if you don't think you can do it. So don't worry about the protections there. You do the job. Those experiences over time have put in me a belief that you don't apply unless you believe you can do it. I have strong beliefs in both my skill sets and where I've been. I mentor young people, and I tell them this. The struggles you have today are real struggles. But when you overcome those struggles, they make you better tomorrow. I believe I have an advantage in life because of the many struggles I had as a kid. Struggling through life allows me to, allowed me to see life through the lens of the fifty-four percent of our young people who are economically disadvantaged in this community. And I don't take that lightly. I believe myself to be a role model as superintendent for every young person in our city. And I'm going to carry myself in a way that respects that responsibility. And two, now I can say, I've done this work before. And I've done this work with some level of success. Every job I've been in, I've been quite fortunate to have really good teams around me. A superintendent is only as good as the team around them, and my teams have been high-performing and have achieved results for young people. Coming to Lowell is not going to be the biggest job I ever had. It will be the most important, and it is going to be the longest-term job I've ever had. But it's built, and it will start on a foundation of a lot of experience, including experience in a similarly situated school district of fourteen thousand kids, a similarly situated school district of seventy percent economically disadvantaged in Santa Fe, and a school district in Santa Fe that was the second-largest media market in the state. So I come to you with the experience of someone who's done it, the humility of someone who struggled, and the confidence of someone who's built, built up over time by a great mother who invested her life in me.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Obviously, from our, our even conversation up to this date, we all recognize that the superintendency requires a broad range of skills. Obviously, executive functioning and, and understanding of fiscal matters and even marketing and, and public relations. But at the end of the day, it is the educational expertise that really will drive the success, if I think, of our next superintendent. Could you share with us kind of the overarching educational principles that drive you? The, the theories of acquisition, the theories of, of, of understanding and development that when you're considering curriculum, when you're thinking about reorganizing perhaps a, a component of the district? What are those kind of, those foundation blocks of educational theory that really help you build appropriate responses?
Yeah. So first, I will tell you, I believe a high-quality public education is a fundamental civil right of every child in our schools. Now, that's different than what we hear often. I don't believe that public education is a privilege. A privilege can be denied. A civil right cannot be taken away from someone. And a high-quality education, I believe, to be a fundamental civil right of every kid in our schools. Two, I believe that teaching and learning are at the core of our work. Everything we do has to support our teachers and students in the classroom. Three, I believe parents are our partners. I believe they're our children's first teachers in the home. We need to engage our parents as partners, and we need to empower them to make decisions. Four, I don't believe there's a silver bullet to solve the challenges of public education. I believe it's hard and steady work over time, which is why I'm sitting here before you saying, this is a ten-to-twelve-year commitment, not a two-to-three-year commitment. It will take hard and steady work over time. There is no silver bullet to solve these educational gaps that I just spoke to in terms of the data. And five, I believe that a high-quality public education is the responsibility of every member of our community. It requires us to work with our entire community to bring about the supports and the need to change in our schools. I will tell you this. The Chapter Seventy Foundation budget is completely broken, but the foundation of partnerships here in Lowell are thriving, and it provides a foundation for us to build on. I don't believe that we're building from nothing. We're truly moving from good to great. And the partnerships that we have here in Lowell build some of that partnership, build some of that foundation for us. Today is UMass Lowell's graduation. So congratulations to everybody who is taking part in those festivities. That's an important asset. That's a big resource. That's a great partner for us here. Some of my graduates I know are going to UMass Lowell, so you're getting some good ones coming to you as well. Those core beliefs, those core values hung on every wall in Santa Fe. Not only did we live them in our minds, we saw them visually. We came back to them. I gave those who visited, I hope, Mr. Lay, I hope you got your folder. I gave a copy of the strategic plan that we built out in Santa Fe. And you'll see that those core values are laid out at the beginning of that strategic plan. Now, perhaps there are different core values that the school committee has. Those just happen to be mine, and they were adopted word for word in Santa Fe. But building out those core values are necessary for us to put forward educational priorities that'll start to drive this work forward. I will tell you, kind of going from values, then you asked for theory of action. If we improve the quality of teaching and learning, heighten expectations for every student and adult, and increase the levels of family engagement, then I believe all of our students will learn at a high level, and all of our students will graduate from high school ready for life and career success. I don't believe that a college education is necessarily the right choice for every kid. I believe it's a family choice. Families should make that decision. However, readiness for college, I believe, to be a public responsibility. And when a kid graduates with a Lowell diploma, it should mean something. And it should mean that they're ready for whatever decision they want in life. And every kid should have access to the, to the skills they need so that they're ready to make those decisions upon graduation. And I think if we can hold to those, some semblance of those shared principles, I think we're, we're already a long way towards accomplishing a true strategic plan for this district. Did I, did I answer all of it this morning?
I'm going to ask a follow-up. And I appreciate your answer absolutely. But just to drill down a little bit, just because I'm trying to get a, a kind of understanding of the overarching kind of learning theories that, that guide you. And I don't want to, I mean, mine are based on many years ago, so I'm sure there are more up-to-date, you know, researchers and whatnot. But if we're talking Piaget, if we're talking Jung, Jung, like what are the learning theories that kind of, that, that provide the direction for you when you're looking at a new math curriculum? That the way you understand learning for students in that kind of a, the academic sense? I think you're giving me wonderful, real-world answers. Which is, at the end of the day, what really matters. But I do like to kind of have an, an idea of kind of the thought behind that.
Yeah. So let me, let me take it, I'll, I'll take it one step down for you and together as a room. One, I would say first, Piaget. I think one thing we learned about him is his entire sample set was his own kids. And in a community as diverse as ours, you know, we got to kind of go beyond Piaget's family in order to really understand the notion of child development. There's a, but I don't, John Dewey was around for a long time ago. Dewey actually had some core principles of learning that still aren't applied today and should be relevant to all of our kids. Because Dewey's principles of project-based learning, real-world experiences, kids learning by doing, are experiences that we're seeing our kids taking advantage of in droves at greater Lowell Tech. We see kids taking advantage of it in droves in Boston in our career pathways. I have a school that I supervise right now that has nineteen different Chapter Seventy-four-approved pathways for career learning. Kids graduate with career certifications. In Santa Fe, we actually divided up our high schools, our large high schools, along a, a continuum. And, and this is kind of, will get you a little bit further where I look at things based on rigor, relevance, and respect. Or rigor, relevance, and relationships, which obviously revolves around respect. So a generation ago, right, the three Rs were reading, writing, and arithmetic. I think that is a, an antiquated model. And I think the model right now is really around rigor, relevance, and relationships. So when we redesigned our high schools in Santa Fe, it was built around that model. Relationships with kids by creating smallness out of the large school structure. Small academies for our kids. You're starting to move in that direction. Have been over some time. I had the good fortune of meeting your freshman academy leader when I was here. Creating relationships for kids means that everybody knows their name, knows their strength, knows where they're going. Relevance for our kids by making the curriculum relevant. When we know about a child, we can make the curriculum relevant. And when we make the curriculum relevant, we can up the rigor so that our youngsters are graduating with the skills that they need to achieve at the next level. A youngster who's not achieving in a math class does not mean a youngster can't achieve in a math class. It means we haven't reached them in the right way. When I know Connie across from me, and I know what drives Connie's passions, I can shape the curriculum around Connie. And when I can make the curriculum relevant to you, now I can also expect more of you, and you're going to rise to that expectation every single time. I believe Schools of Tomorrow, Dewey Schools of Tomorrow, I believe that was written in nineteen oh six. Those things still resonate today. Hey, there's a, but, more currently, I'll tell you. There's a, there's a researcher by the name of Richard Elmore. He's a, he's now retired, but he was an important professor of mine. And he said this, he said, you learn by doing the work, not by having done the work sometime in the past, not by talking about the work, and not by hiring someone else as a proxy for the work. So we continue to learn by doing the work. Appointing myself as a principal allowed me to continue doing the work alongside my principals. Teaching classes, mentoring kids is about doing the work, learning about our youngsters, learning about our young people, working alongside of our teachers. That research of Elmore. He also said this. He said, if you're going to hold someone accountable... He also said this, he said, "If you're gonna hold someone accountable, you're obligated to provide an equal level of support." I believe that to be true for all of our teachers. If we're gonna expect them to achieve at a higher level with our students, we've got to provide them with a higher level of support. Did I go further down?
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, and I apologize by using your first name.
Mr. Neta?
All right, you made it through round one.
I think my pacing was off in the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee, Ms. Martin. Was that not right? So, if I made it through round one, I'm gonna take that as a win?
Absolutely.
The, you mentioned that the relationship between a superintendent and the school committee has to be like a partnership, another form of partnership. When you have so many different personalities and, you know, people with their own areas, so, one of the things, right now, we don't offer science in the elementary schools. We don't have libraries in the elementary or middle schools. The Moody and the Washington schools don't have a dedicated social worker except for special ed. We've spent money on an HR, in a finance audit, and yet, those two departments, in my opinion, are critically understaffed. We don't have, we don't follow a state-mandated health curriculum. And yet, we offer a great, state-recognized program of adult education. And it truly just riles me up that money that I think we should spend on kids, we're spending on adults. But again, we all have our own. So, how do you deal with those kind of conflicts where you think the best way for the policy and your school committee may not support that, or your teachers' union may not support that? How do you work through these difficult conflicts?
Yeah. So, I referenced the analogy of a marriage earlier. There's lots of stuff I don't have that I want because my wife is not in agreement with it, and she'll tell you a good many examples of that. So, I think it requires communication, it requires understanding, and it also requires us to leverage each other's expertise. I really appreciated your blog post. I had the opportunity to go back and read your blog post, actually, on that particular topic. It's well-thought-out, it's well-positioned. You spent a lot of time researching it and thinking through that, and I want to recognize that and appreciate it. At the same time, it wasn't consistent with the views of the rest of the school committee, and you saw that to be true as well, and I want to recognize that also. I think it's important to talk regularly. I met every week with my school board members. Some of them preferred coffee, some of them preferred a different type of cocktail, some of them preferred to meet in the office, some of them preferred to have breakfast. Whatever that case was, that's where I was, to meet with them regularly. When we were at our best, we were holding to those meetings. Life gets the best of you, and what I found is when we couldn't hold to those meetings, that's where sometimes the communication broke down. The second thing that we did is I met with small groupings, nonquorum groupings of the board, prior to every board meeting. We would talk through each of the things that were gonna be on the agenda. Now, as committee members, you can't count votes. As a superintendent, it's my responsibility to count votes. And what I would do is I would have open conversations with my team. "There seems to be some real divides on the committee on these particular issues. I think we need to do more work on this." So, sometimes, if things were really contentious, we'd make decisions with the chair that things just weren't ready to go forward. Sometimes, in conversation, we'd say, "We need to have this conversation in public." We know all of that based on these informal conversations that we can have. Individually, small groups, everything doesn't have to take place in committee chambers. Because you are also, in some ways, although we don't like to say it, when you're in the spotlight and on a microphone, you don't necessarily always able to get to the heart of the issues. So, we need to have those relationships, and that's where I give that analogy of marriage. The second thing is, those conversations, those understandings, that knowledge, has to feed into our priorities and our plan. And when we don't fund something, we need to know what that's gonna mean in terms of cutting strategy, in terms of cutting outcomes. So, when we're not funding something, as we go back to before, every dollar is aligned with an outcome, and every outcome is aligned with a strategy. When we make a decision such as that, what strategy are we investing in, which one are we not? What outcomes are we planning to achieve, and what outcomes are we not? Then, we can have a real conversation about our young people and the impact on our young people, rather than our own individual philosophies as to what's right and what's wrong in terms of inputs. The more we can drive to conversations on outcomes, the easier the decisions are with the inputs. Did that answer your question in full?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Or were you driving me after saying, "Which way would I go on that one?"
No, not gonna put you on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. In lieu of time, I've cut down one of my questions here, but this is something that I'm concerned with. Lowell's a mid-sized city. You're gonna find this a city with a university, you know that, a community college, a business collaborative called the Lowell Plan, which is all the major business owners in the city working to make this a better city. The national park, a public-private partnership, especially the Project Learn, which is something important to Lowell School Department. Former Senator Paul Songer said that the success of the city has been because of the public-private partnerships. But in truth, in the past few years, several superintendents that I've observed have not embraced any of this in any way, and have not shown leadership in those partnerships. Yes, we have a partnership with the university, yes, we have a partnership with Middlesex, but I've seen them in the past much stronger, much better, and much more, you know, of worth for our children. I mean, this is where the money is, this is where the support is. So, I mean, am I talking about something that's impossible, or is this something as superintendent with the many tasks that you've outlined that you would have to do as a superintendent to satisfy all the requests or the questions that are made? Would you have time, or do you feel that there is, you should make time to go outside of the office, into the community, and embrace these people?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think I referred to it before, saying, you know, Chapter 70 Foundation budget is broken, but the foundation of partnerships here in this city is a real asset and is thriving. I think, so, I believe that to be one of the great strengths of this community. The resources of partnerships are gonna be essential for us to bring this community forward, and we're all gonna have to come together and work together on one path forward. I think a plan, a clear strategic plan built from the community, with the community, helps to drive that collaboration. I will also say this, and I'll give you an example of a way that that worked in my previous superintendency. Our young people are in school five days a week for seven hours for 180 days. There are seven days in a week. There are 24 hours in a day. There are 365 days in a year. Our young people are only in school from age five to 18 primarily. I would go so far to say that our young people's lives in Lowell, like anyplace else, begins at zero and goes on well beyond 18. So, what we created in Santa Fe was a partnership, a coalition, which we called the, which was working from cradle to career. Coalition of partnerships across the city to fund early childhood education, all the way up to adult education and everything in between. It included colleges. Community college president was there, I was there, the mayor was spearheading it with the support of the local foundation that was funding it. Together, we were able to do some pretty incredible work, some things we didn't get accomplished, but we were all together marching towards the same outcomes, which we designed together, that would then be outcomes for each individual in their respective area of leadership. If it was a school outcome, that's what we signed on to, school committee, superintendent, school department. If it was a higher learning outcome, community college, early learning, we had a lot of partners that were focusing on that. That work was pretty powerful. It was getting underway and getting established and was starting to get formalized. I believe the mayor of Santa Fe spoke to that in the letter of recommendation that he submitted on my behalf. We had other partnerships that were important to initiatives we had in the school department that we connected then to work that others could do to support us. One was the Santa Fe Teaching Fellows. We had a severe teacher shortage, particularly in bilingual education. In a community that was bilingual by constitution, we were working to expand bilingual education for our young people. I really believe in dual-language programming, which is allowing youngsters to learn two languages simultaneously and graduate truly bilingual, but I couldn't get the bilingual teachers that I needed. I had a lot of paraprofessionals who needed the certification. The community college could provide the certification. We created something we called the Santa Fe Classroom Fellows, which certified 18 teachers who were paraprofessionals. We paid for them to go to community college to get their certification. They committed to come back and work in our classrooms, they can move from paraprofessional to teacher. It ended up doing a number of things. Most importantly, we could serve our young people. Second, we could create a career path for our paraprofessionals in our schools. And third, I think the best relationships are built through the hardest work. It created a really strong relationship with the community college. And I think the more we can find opportunities to work together, the stronger our relationships can be. And I will tell you this, the work of the superintendent is three things. Certainly, educational leadership. We talked a lot about managerial leadership. It also requires political leadership. We haven't talked a whole lot about that third rung, but that's extremely important. It's obviously the realm you sit in a lot, Mr. Mayor, and which is why I appreciate that question. You know, that political leadership is about the relationships that we build. Requires me, and I gave, I believe, to the visiting group the entry plan that I used in Santa Fe, spending a significant amount of time to build those relationships, to listen to people, to learn. I've said time and time again, experiences I had before can't be replicated in Lowell. Lowell's a different place. Those experiences are relevant, but Lowell is a different city, requiring different solutions. In order to understand what's needed in Lowell, I've got to understand from the people in Lowell. I spent a long time reading a lot. I can name the plans of each of those groups that you suggested. I can tell you what's on their websites, but I need to sit down and meet with them. I have to understand and learn from them. And those relationships, at the end of the day, is going to allow us to partner together and to build bridges for our young people. Yet, this, this community is built on a long history of public service, and I see the superintendent as being a public servant at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, thank you. As you know, when there are budget challenges, taxpayers and parents ask, "Why don't we look at cutting central office staff?" When you took over some of your school districts that were struggling, how did you make sure that taxpayers and parents know the value and need to retain central staff along with our classroom teachers and parents that are critical to our students' needs?
Yeah. I will tell you, number one, overall, central office is a minuscule percentage of an overall budget in any school department, and yours is even smaller. The individuals in your central office are heavily taxed in their working hours. Some of them are working two, three jobs that were previously held by two and three different people. They are burning out. Some of them are leaving. You told me about a couple of them that are actually looking elsewhere. We can't ask more and more of people consistently. We have to value what they're doing, we have to show them that we value what they're doing, and part of that is us taking out the conversation of constantly talking about cutting their jobs. Once we cut one more of them, somebody else is gonna have to pick up that work. And I can tell you personally, again, going back, I've worked two jobs, I've worked superintendent and principal at the same time. I enjoyed it. It's not a way to sustain yourselves to educational improvement. It's not a way to work yourself out of a budget gap. But, then again, when a community sees six-figure salaries, not in a school, it seems logical to say, "Those are the people furthest from our kids. They should go first." And I do think that's a logical response from a community. So, first, it's us communicating and helping people to understand what people do in central office. Our central office staff members should be visible in the community and should be visible in schools. They should know our central office leaders. My community knows me. I believe I would be characterized as a central office leader. As I told you, I'm not in central office very often at all. Two, the educational plan that I've been talking about throughout, when we can develop educational priorities that are clear, that are built with the community, and people can see how individuals' jobs are leading to those outcomes that they care about for kids, that helps them to understand the importance of those roles. I think the first thing, unfortunately, we end up cutting in central office are our educational support leaders. Obviously, we're not gonna run school buses if somebody's not there to organize buses. People understand that. Unfortunately, people don't necessarily see the importance and the value of someone who's supporting our principals. And now, I'm hearing time and time again from our principals here in Lowell that that support is really lacking. They need support. Again, that was a really powerful statement one principal made, to say, you know, autonomy is highly valued, neglect is really harmful. And when we're starting to cross that threshold, we gotta look again at the level of support that we're providing for our leaders in our schools, because the level of support we can provide for our leaders is the level of support they can provide for their teachers, which is the level of support that teachers can provide for students. If we can support the adults in this district really well, then they can support our children really well. Requires us to talk about them with respect, with courtesy. Requires us to clearly communicate what their roles are doing for kids and what they're achieving on behalf of this community, and it requires us to really support them. I come to you, having held, I believe, every job in public education, except for bus driver. I haven't done that one, I haven't done that one. It was really tough to manage a classroom of 30 kids, so a classroom of 50 that's rolling 60 miles an hour while I have to look forward and everybody's behind me, that sounds like a pretty daunting task. Haven't done that one yet, but I've ridden a lot of school buses. But I will tell you, from having walked in their shoes, I believe I'm well situated to also help support them while they're walking in their own shoes.
Dr. Boyd, excuse me. We've got approximately 10 minutes. You know, we've measured ourselves at an hour and a half, but do you wanna go through, everybody have their one question? That will, okay. No, no, I'm fine, just wanna make sure we follow a set, you know, guide, okay? Mr. Doherty?
Thank you. So, the word that keeps going around in my head is diversity. I think it's one of our greatest strengths as a school district.
The greatest strength, yes.
And I want to ask you about what you would do to help us get more of our diverse parents involved in the district. It's been an ongoing challenge, and I know you mentioned it with the moving pairs into the bilingual teachers, but if you could also touch on how to, how you would help us with that, the diverse staffing that we need and the leaders that we need as well. But to kind of start with the families and the parents, how would you get our families at the table where we really want them to be?
Yeah. So, first, was, kind of comes back to something that I said before, is allowing parents to make real choices and empowering them to make real choices and decisions that impact their young people. Bringing parents to the table just simply to tell them what's gonna happen to their kids really doesn't provide a whole lot of value for them to come to the table. Making sure that they're really, all of our families are treated as partners. Now, this is something that actually, I think I've seen everything throughout my career. I saw something for the first time when I walked through Lowell's public schools this week. We apparently have a process here with 47 languages being served, where we only allot our principals 200 minutes for an entire year of telephone translation services. Now, 200 minutes runs up pretty quickly, and right now, you've got some pretty frustrated principals who simply can't communicate with the families they are serving. Forty-seven languages, it's impossible for every building to have someone who speaks every language. I was a principal of a school that had 32 languages spoken. I supervised a region in Philadelphia with 64 languages spoken. Right now, we have 70 languages spoken across Boston. We simply, I'm learning new languages that exist every day. I don't know how your principals are finding people to speak every language, and quite frankly, I'm guessing they're not, which means we're not even able to show families the courtesy of having someone who can talk to them. Now, I don't know, I imagine it was well-intended, somebody made a decision to cap the limit, but the principal I had talked to runs up the full limit in the first quarter of the school year. I asked her, I said, "What do you do?" She said, "I run around, I find somebody, I look for somebody, I try to find somebody who can speak." Now, you put yourself in that parent's shoes, and if you're coming to the table to engage your school, and your principal is trying to figure out how to even talk to you, that doesn't feel very respectful. that doesn't feel very respectful. And I think that notion of courtesy and respect has to be first and paramount to our expectation that we're going to be able to engage families. I would ask you so boldly, maybe rethink that, that process or policy, even if you choose another superintendent. I don't know what led to that decision, but it seems like one that can be easily solved. It seems like one that could, yeah, there is a... So I think that's important. Second, we need to look at resource distribution across the district. I really believe that dollars should follow kids to our schools. We have a system of funding in, that we, we developed and built out in Santa Fe. It's the same system of school funding that we utilize in Boston. Many cities utilize this system of funding now. It goes by a couple of names, Fair Student Funding or Weighted Student Formula. The way this looks is instead of a school receiving a certain number of teachers and a certain number of paras and a certain librarian and a number of adults, they receive a certain dollar amount based on the students they're serving. And we determine as a community what student needs relate to what dollar amount in terms of a weight. That's the Weighted Student Formula. So then, when a student moves across the system, the dollars move with the kids. So now, schools are receiving the dollars that are consistent with the needs of their young people. And families then are playing a role in making decisions. So real decisions that families can make, seeing that we're recognizing the needs of young people, English language learners in a community of forty-seven different languages spoken, is an extremely important need for us to look at weighting. We might not be able to give everything that a school needs, but we can move the dollars with kids and we can allow parents and teachers and principals to come together around those dollars. The next thing we need to look at is programming across the district and our programs allocated in an equitable way. And I think that notion of equity, regardless of where you live, regardless of where you live, whether it be Velvadere or Centralville or Pawtucketville or the Acre or the Highlands, wherever you live, you have access to high-quality programming that's relevant for your young person, provided to you in a way that shows you courtesy and respect that comes from a basis of cultural understanding. I think it's a requirement of us in a community as diverse as ours for us to really get after that training that I spoke to earlier. Help everybody understand all of our children's backgrounds. You're not going to be able to walk in every child's shoes, but you can at least come from a place of understanding, a place of cultural competence that allows us to work and support young people and families from a place of courtesy and respect. And we can bring families to the table around real decisions that matter to them about their kids. Now, when I've been able to do that, we called our plan in Santa Fe Equity and Access Plan. We ran it across the city. We looked at those three areas of programming across the city, resource distribution and treating families with courtesy and respect. When you expect it, you inspect it. That data found its way back up to the school committee and school board to look at that data. And, you know, we made, we made different decisions based on where we saw the outcomes having and the impact having for all of our families. You know, there's, I'll tell you this, it's a, you know, I kind of mentioned the translation. We had a interesting thing that I encountered in Santa Fe. We didn't have interpreters at our public meetings. So families would come to our meetings and they couldn't understand what was being said, nor could they share in a public way. Now, to me, that seemed completely baffling. So I added interpreters at every meeting. It seemed like a common sense thing to do. You wouldn't believe the level of thanks that are provided from families for simply doing the right thing, simply asking the question, working from a basis of equity and respect and understanding and knowing that our diversity is our greatest asset and we've got to leverage that asset in order to bring about true outcomes for all of our kids. I believe that's one that's still stood this test of time. I believe I still have interpreters at every meeting in, in Santa Fe. Couldn't solve everything, but we got that one done, right?
Mr. Hoi?
Thank you again. If I remember everything from your site visit, I, I remember you getting credit for closing a couple of schools, I believe. And I know when you close schools like that, you have to go talk to a lot of parents. Well, we're trying to turn around a few schools in Centerville. One's called the Robinson School. And within a mile, I'd say a half a mile, you have the Greenout School, which is an elementary. And I heard you like to build your offices in different places. If you got this job, would you move your office over to the Robinson School to turn that around, because that's what this school committee wants to do? We're already in the process and we're going down, I hope, to get a million-dollar grant for that school. But would you move in there for a while to maybe straighten out that school?
Yeah. I believe you have twenty-eight schools across this city. And my responsibility is to every single school. I'll be in every single school and I'll be in our neatest schools most. I will tell you this, across my career, people have given me the most challenging schools for some reason, for somehow. I, I don't quite know why that is, but I've been provided with that privilege. Closing schools is not the answer. This was an unfortunate circumstance that you heard of in Boston. It was a facilities issue that required us to close it. And it's, I will tell you this, just, just to talk about that for a second, because being, we're being broadcast worldwide. This will find its way into my local newspaper as well. The hardest things you can do in management are layoffs and closing a school. We never want to do either of those. We never relish the possibility to do those. We don't lead to school improvement by closing schools, nor do we lead to school improvement by giving away schools. So it was an unfortunate circumstance. I, we did, we were able to lead through that particular circumstance with the community at the forefront, working with the community to understand something that certainly nobody in the community wanted to have happen either. We will transition out of that. I was tasked with that. The other thing that I was tasked with is last year in the, for the first, one of the schools that I had last year in Boston was one of the first schools in, as recent history, that was able to exit from turnaround status. One of our elementary schools, Winthrop School. I had elementary and high schools last year. With that success of that school, I was asked to take on all of our turnaround high schools this year in Boston. So now I supervise five turnaround high schools, you know? Do good work with one school, we reward you by giving you five more that, you know? There is a, but across my career, I've worked in environments requiring turnaround. I told you the circumstance of Santa Fe overall with the, one of the lowest graduation rates in the city. I told you about the school where I was a principal. Working with the community, with teachers, with principals, we've been able to bring about positive outcomes in every instance. And I wouldn't expect any different here in Lowell. It's not overnight. Results don't come overnight. It's hard and steady work over time. Improvement is not a straight-line trajectory. There are ebbs and flows. There are peaks and valleys. We've got to work to learn from one another. We've got to work to share the knowledge we gain. And we've got to stay true to our vision over time to bring about those outcomes for kids over time. I would, I will be there as much as it requires me to be there to bring about that level of improvement. We actually have five schools here in Lowell that are in the single-digit percentile. What that means, bottom ten percent of performance in the state. Lowell High School, our flagship high school, is only at the thirteenth percentile. There's a lot of need across the city. We also have some schools that are in the top third of the state. We need to create a mechanism so schools can share with one another, learn from one another. Principals can come together, learn from one another. Teachers can learn from one another so that we can bring about a true community of learners, so that we can scale up the work that's happening in one school. So it doesn't require one person in one school, but instead, we're all working together, connecting to one another, networking together to bring about the same outcomes together. Yeah, I think you can expect to see me there quite often. The five, the five schools here should expect to see me quite often. But I also will not be absent from the other twenty-three. I will be present in the community. I believe it was, I think I told people in another group, this year, I'm in schools four days out of the five days a week. Pretty much all day in schools, doing work. I don't go into a school to simply shake hands. If I'm in school, I'm not going to be distracting people. Instead, I'm going to be supporting people. I'm going to be working with kids, working with teachers, working with the principal so that as a result of my time in schools, we can all be in a better place after. I think that you should see from me. But Mr. Hoi, if you're telling me to be at the school, then by all means, you're the boss, man.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Ley?
Thank you. Hi, Dr. Boyd. I want to do a follow-up. I want to change my question a little bit and do a follow-up from Ms., Ms. Dorothy's question about, on diversity. I know many of our teachers and administrators who have been talking about diversity since they started working for Lowell Public Schools. And now, some of them, and, you know, and, or have already or about to get, to be retired. And how, you mentioned that you want, you were supporting the translation in, in school in Santa Fe and you found that it gave you good, good result from the community. So for me, I feel that not only translation, but parent liaisons who could speak the language that serve the students and also the paras who may speak the language that serve the students could be very helpful. So I'm wondering, how long, if you implement that, if you want to implement those program, programs, how long will it take you to, to get it going?
I think it gets going immediately. But I, I don't want to, I don't want to overpromise, nor do I want to sound too ambitious here. I need to learn from people here. I need to, I need to spend some time talking with people, learning from people here. I know what I've, the data I've seen. I've spent a lot of time here in this community, but not nearly enough to learn from people of what's been tried, what has worked, what do we need to expand, what do we need to stop doing, what do we need to start doing? I will, and I appreciate, Mr. Ley, you brought up Ms. Doherty's question, because I think there was another part of her question, which was talking about, how do we bring about diversity in staffing? And I only answered part of it. I'm proud to say that the most diverse cabinet ever in the history of Santa Fe was brought about during my tenure. I didn't define it that way. The community defined it that way. But that was a core principle that I brought with me because I believe that a diversity of perspective is important to making good decisions. I believe that diversity in teams at every level allows us to uncover the needs of our diverse community and bring about those needed solutions far quicker. So I think what you would see from me immediately is a focus on equity, on appreciation of diversity, and an immediate approach to leveraging that diversity, which includes diversifying our teams. In Boston, we actually measure the diversity of every school's teams. We use that, we provide numbers. We call it a diversity index. Every school receives it, inspect what you expect. The other thing we do is we have screening committees for all of our principal hires. Those screening committees are made up of diverse membership from the community. That screening committee, once it's selected, is then provided with what we call equity training. For the screening committees, I lead, I provide that equity training. So I just provided training for a screening committee at one of our really diverse vocational high schools for the entire screening committee of what does it mean to lead with an equity lens and to hire through racial bias? Provided them that training. I provided that training. I really believe in that philosophy of diversity through hiring and overcoming bias through recognizing and being conscious of that bias. I think all of those things are very, very easy to bring about. Now, often, when I talk about diversifying teams and creating diversity, people somehow assume that this is something along the lines of affirmative action or something like that and start to create a negative context to it. I'll tell you this, diversity leads us to better decisions because people bring different backgrounds to the table, different perspectives. Mr. Ley, you bring a different perspective than me. And having us both at the table to be able to make decisions allows us to make a better decision at the end of the day. And you bringing a perspective to the table based on your work in the community helps us to get to a better understanding of the needs of that community. Those kind of things we can do really, really quickly. Changing people's beliefs and mindsets through training, that takes time. I believe that beliefs follow behavior, meaning that people act in a certain way. They get results and those results change their beliefs. We change their behaviors first. And I think requiring people to be respectful and courteous of everyone and training them at the same time will ultimately change those beliefs. And that's how we can also start to change how we're supporting community members and how we're bringing together different viewpoints to make decisions. I know a lot of that was related to Ms. Doherty's question, so I want to make sure I got after your entire question. Did I answer yours in full? Sound like maybe you were hesitating. All right.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I know you had intimated about this a little bit, about your recognizing the deficiency in terms of our translation services for principals. But I'm curious, as you went through kind of your, your day in Lowell.
Yes.
You know, with an opportunity to talk with, I know, with principals and teachers and students and, and getting a real introduction to, to our city's educational, you know, team. Were there any other things that you really found surprising? You've done a lot of research on Lowell, I know, having gone through the Blue Ribbon Process. Was there anything that you really found surprising and interesting that kind of helped inform how you prepared for today and how you'd see yourself preparing to start a new superintendency?
Yeah. I think one that I wouldn't, first thing I would say that I wouldn't say is surprising, but it was certainly, it was certainly appreciated, was the hard work and the commitment of every individual that I met with. Everybody without fail talked about the great team that's here. From every level of the organization, people working above and beyond their job description, working long hours to overcome the gaps in resources that are there for kids, to bring about the needed services for kids, every individual throughout this system. It didn't surprise me because I had heard that before coming. But it was certainly appreciated to see it in action. One thing that did surprise me is the lack of data that's finding its way through the system to make decisions. Each school seemed to have their own metrics that they look at in order to make decisions. Principals were unclear what outcomes were expected of them in terms of their personal performance, their professional performance, how they were evaluated. Some principals told me they hadn't been evaluated. There seems to be some resources have been cut from the data and accountability office. Now, it's, it's not unique. It's happened, it's, it's elsewhere. It's occurring elsewhere. I think it was a little surprising to me because you're achieving some pretty good results absent any kind of performance management and progress monitoring. You know, we talked about the challenges in performance, but people are doing some pretty hard work and achieving some pretty good results when they don't have the data they need to make decisions. Because if you think about it this way, and I had this experience as a kid. When I was sixteen years old, I had a car that wasn't really good. I told you, I struggled with money. I couldn't get the car that worked really well. So my car did not have a speedometer. And in the wisdom of my sixteen years, I thought I could read the rest of the dashboard and figure out how fast I was going. Now, that doesn't work really well. When you don't have the data you need to make the decision in front of you, you're going to be setting a course to a destination that may or may not be right. It's just simply arbitrary. And I think, from hearing from some of your principals, some of them are feeling like they're driving a car without a speedometer, that they're, they're being asked to drive towards results, that they get fed to them at the end of the year, but they don't know whether they're achieving that each quarter. That, that to me, while not the lack of data is not surprising, the fact that they're achieving so much with the lack of resources, the lack of information that they have, I think that's incredible. I think you've got some really, really hard-working people that are doing some incredible work on behalf of kids. In many cases, there, you know, I told you, the one principal doesn't feel, you know, feels like we're starting to get to a place of neglect. People pulling themselves up by their bootstraps and figuring it out, working together, long hours, well beyond what should be expected of them, taking time from their families, taking time from their children to give to the city's children. And I think that's incredible. Imagine what we can achieve if we start providing people with the resources that they need, which doesn't always have to be in the form of money. Information is available to us. Providing, synthesizing that information, providing it out in a way that people can understand, we can do that. We have to make a decision that it's important to us and that it's needed. And it seems we're getting to a place where that's probably a decision we should make.
Dr. Boyd, thank you. If you have any voice left, you have five minutes to give us a concluding statement.
Thank you. I'll tell you, it's a little sad for the process to come to an end. Up in, you know, I think the application was April twenty-second, but I think my wife and I started talking about this back before my fortieth birthday on March 2nd. So we've been looking at this as an opportunity for a long time. We've been in this together for a long time. First, exploring whether this was a right fit for us, then researching the district and then going through, learning about the district and with, with all of you. And I want to just thank you for allowing me that opportunity. If this is the last time that we see each other, I just want to... If this is the last time that we see each other, I just want to let you know how grateful I am of that opportunity. And again, whether I'm your superintendent or not, I may very well be your neighbor if, uh, the houses don't get sold out for me every time I try to do it. I hear one of the houses right down the street from you, Mr. Mayor, so I'm gonna have to leverage you. But I think the, what's really in front of us is a school district at the crossroads. And it's an opportunity for us all to come together and say, are we gonna create a model city and a model school district for all of our diverse populations? Or are we gonna continue down the path that we've been down in the status quo in a system in schools that have worked for the generation before but aren't working really well for all of our kids today? Uh, we've got that decision. We're at that crossroads. What I'm looking forward to is the opportunity to truly engage the diverse community here in Lowell. The diversity of this city is its greatest asset. It is largely under-leveraged. Leveraging that diversity can bring about powerful outcomes for every kid. If we can be the first school district to close the achievement gaps, a hundred percent of our young people graduating from high school, a hundred percent ready for the next step of their lives, we can bring about learning not only for Massachusetts, but the country as a whole. You know, a generation ago, you were just simply competing against your neighbor or the person down the road for a job. That's no longer the case. This is truly a global economy, and our youngsters here in Lowell have the opportunity to grow up in the microcosm of that global economy. That's a real opportunity that not every kid gets. This is a city that inspired the service of Songus. It inspired the creativity of Kerouac. It's a city that can inspire that next generation as well. And the partnerships are here, the resources are here in terms of people. We simply need to leverage that diversity to bring about the results that we all seek for our kids. I think that's a powerful opportunity, and an opportunity that can't be wasted. I believe you here as a school committee are right there at that juncture, that crossroad. Are we gonna take this school district into a place where we can support every youngster to be ready for a global economy? Or are we gonna stay in the industrial design of schooling that worked for a generation ago? That opportunity, I would like the opportunity to work as part of that team. I believe I bring some experiences to bear, and it would be a great privilege and a humbling experience to be a part of it and to lead you as your next superintendent. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Take a five-minute break.